There, Harry and Felicity, we're together.
Okay, I would like to call the Concord Carlisle School Committee to order.
And I will call the Concord School Committee meeting to order.
So, welcome everyone, it's a very exciting night, we have a lot of people in the room with us, a lot of wonderful students, so we'll be excited to hear from them, but first, we're gonna start with our high school students, and it looks like they're online.
Hi.
Zara is not gonna be joining us tonight, she had a conflict, but Felicity and I still have a presentation for you guys.
Oh, no. Oh, no, screen share may not.
And I should mention before you start, we have the Thoreau Student Council with us tonight, so they're probably very interested to hear about what you guys are doing at the high school.
Sorry, give me, we're using my computer today and screen share isn't working, could you just give us like one minute? Harry is grabbing his laptop right now.
Of course.
Perfect.
Sorry.
Totally okay.
And if I could ask anyone that's online, if you are not one of the CCHS students, if you could turn your cameras off, just so we can get them up on our screen in our room. And I think we also have a school committee member that's online, who it just works a little bit better for us if we just have people there speaking online, thank you, or on camera. All right.
So, we're just gonna go through our presentation orally tonight, just because having some technical difficulties with the screen share. But to start us off, Student Senate is continuing its preparations for Spirit Week, so we had the Powder Bowl signups that finished just this past week. We're starting to go through and order jerseys and things for that now, so that should be a good event. We're also very much in the middle of planning our upcoming Spirit Assembly, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break. A lot of moving parts involved with that, but it's always something that the students and teachers enjoy, so we're looking forward to that. And also, we're just working on our club windows, so for those of you that don't know, there are a lot of windows in front of the cafeteria and outside of the library in the high school, and every year we give clubs the opportunity to come in and decorate a window promoting their club.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm actually running club windows, so it's always super fun to see like all of the different decorations that the different clubs do, especially because we've recently approved a lot of new ones. Students also had a homework-free weekend this past weekend, because it was the end of quarter one, so that was a much-needed break for many people. And we also just had PSAT scores released in the last couple of days for juniors, which has been a lot of, a subject to a lot of discussion, and yeah.
Yes. And then also, the fall sports teams have all entered the MIAA State Tournament, which is very exciting. Tonight, girls soccer is playing Winchester, and field hockey is playing Algonquin. Unfortunately, both of those games are away, but tomorrow, the boys soccer team is playing Lemonster, and that's at home, so hopefully we'll get a lot of students coming out and showing support for that.
And of course, there's some more performing arts updates. So, after Clue is, for Theater has already wrapped up, but we have the Fall Concerts for Band and Orchestra, which was last Thursday, and the Chorus Fall Concert is this coming Thursday in two days. And there was also, we also had Senior Districts auditions this past weekend, and many people have already gotten their results, and I know a lot of people actually got All-State Rex, so that is really amazing, we always have a lot of great instrumentalists at CC who are able to move on to that higher level, and it's super exciting to see every year.
Yeah, and then also, as a final thing, we're gonna have a special bell schedule on Thursday that's gonna accommodate a DEIB-focused assembly. We haven't gotten too much information yet on the actual assembly itself, but it should be interesting, a nice way to break the routine after the end of the quarter. And also, we're still getting our flex block, which is great.
Yeah, I think flex is definitely the best part of the new bell schedule, has been consistent. Yeah.
Yeah, that's all we have for tonight.
Thank you guys.
Great feedback, thank you, and Felicity, congratulations.
Thank you.
All, a bunch of us were able to go, so we look forward to your next show.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, and next up, we are very excited for our recognition tonight, which we have the Thoreau Student Council with us, and I believe Justin Sparks is here, the principal of Thoreau is gonna introduce them to us, and we look forward to it.
Good evening, should I speak into the microphone?
Yes, you can take it out if you want, if you wanna pass it to the speaker.
Okay, that works. Oh, right, right.
Doesn't work in the room, but it works on Zoom.
Good evening, thank you all for carving out some time for us this evening, I'm Justin Sparks, the very proud principal of Thoreau Elementary School. I think last time I was here, Dr. Hunter invited me to meet all of you and introduce myself, and I remember, upon leaving, I said, "I would love to come back with a group of our Thoreau students, so that they can celebrate and share some of the great work they're doing," so making good on that promise for you tonight. And I honestly, I couldn't think of a better group to do it with. Part of my entry plan is to build leadership capacity across Thoreau, especially with our student leaders, with our fifth graders. This group here, I think you'll see in a couple of minutes, they are very intelligent, highly motivated, kind, caring, funny, compassionate, fifth graders, and I'm so honored and privileged to have the opportunity to work with all of them this year. I only wish I had more time with them. But, so, they're here, and they're very excited, a little bit nervous, to do this work. Dr. Hunter visited one of our meetings, as she does recently, and throughout this idea, and it was met with a lot of questions, it might surprise you. What is the school committee, and what do they do, so this is a learning opportunity here. I'll say though, most of the questions were around attire, right? Do I wear a collared shirt, do I wear a dress, what kind of dress, what color, all sorts of good questions, so. That was a, that was a great meeting, I should say, while I can, Superintendent Hunter, for me, in my role, being new to the district, not new to the role, has been extremely visible and supportive of our efforts at Thoreau, so much appreciated there. So, we will call them up, one at a time, they've sat themselves in order, on their own, and they each have an element of this experience to share with all of you tonight. I said to keep it to less than ten sentences, which I'm hoping that they did. We previewed some of their speeches, and then they're happy to take questions at the end. Also, I should mention, thank you to the parents who drove them here this evening, and also, our counselor Rachel Avak is here too, has been critical to the process, so thank you. Oh, all right, ready? I think Thomas is first.
First of all, we would like to thank Mr. Sparks for presenting this opportunity to us fifth graders at Thoreau. The opportunity for student council was presented, was presented in an assembly at Thoreau. I wanted to be on student council, because I liked the idea of being a leader and helping make our school a better place. To get on the student council, we had to write a speech and get voted in. We also had to include specific guidelines, like what makes you a good leader, and any ideas we had for Thoreau. When I was writing my speech, I included these guidelines, people liked my speech, and I got voted in.
Hello, I am Cam Martin. This is how the fifth grade student council voting process began. Kids from every fifth grade class made speeches on how you can be a good leader and what ideas you have to improve the school. Each person would make a vote for two representatives for your class. You put it on a slip of paper and write a reason why you chose them, and put it in a jar with the other votes. The two people with the most votes became part of the student council. For my class, we had no majority winners, so we had a second election with the top three people with the most votes. At the end, two kids from each class got voted to be part of the fifth grade student council.
Hello, I'm Tevli Kalin. I'll be telling you about leadership qualities, what a leader should do, say, act, and react. Number one, good listener. A good listener is someone who is respectful and kind to the person that is speaking. They focus completely on the person that is talking. Good listening skills is not only about learning what the person is talking about, it is by remembering what the person said, and have the conversation completely developed into your mind. Number two, good communication skills. Having good communication skills are the abilities that allow you to speak from the mind and heart. Say everything clearly and effectively, so others can hear and engage in what you are saying. Number three, self-confidence. Having self-confidence is an amazing trait. Having self-esteem, so you encourage yourself to know that you have what it takes to get the job done. And when your team is falling short, you bring them up and make a difference. Self-confidence usually comes to those who take risks and accomplish high goals. Number four, last but not least, motivates and inspires. A great leader motivates and inspires others around them, to bring out the best in themselves and others. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Isla DeAngelis. Principal Sparks asked me to share some qualities with you that I think make a good leader. Good respect. A good leader has to be respectful of other people and their opinions, because everyone has different points of views. Even if you don't agree with someone, you should always respect them. Good problem solver. If there is a problem, whether it is in student council or not, you need a leader that is a problem solver. There are going to be problems in this world and in student council, because we all have different minds and ways of thinking. A leader that problem solves is the one that finds solution. Upstand. Another quality of a good leader is being an upstander. You want a leader that will stand up for you in any situation. A good student council leader will make everyone feel like someone has their back. To me, these are some qualities of a good leader.
Hi, my name is Anaya Felix. I am a part of the student council. Every Monday morning, we take five minutes to share with our classmates what we came up with in student council. We ask our classmates if they have any ideas to change our school. When we meet as student council, we have an open circle. In our open circle, we have a quote that Mr. Sparks reads to us. We take turns using the talking piece to share our ideas. We share how we feel and express our different feelings in terms of candies or animals.
Hi, my name is Autumn Carson. I'm excited to be here today to share a few, a few school improvement ideas that the Thoreau Student Council has developed and are still planning. First, we have heard that a lot of students want more from our play structures, as well as more recess equipment. We are improving our outdoor play space by having families donate play equipment. This is very exciting for our school. Second, last week, we finished the Halloween Play Monster Badness. It was really fun, and almost everyone in fifth grade signed up. This shows that we should do more plays. One idea is to do more non-holiday plays, because not everyone celebrates the same holiday, holidays. Our community doesn't want to exclude anybody, so if we do more non-holiday plays, no one will feel left out. Finally, we want to create a sense of belonging for everyone in the Thoreau school community. We have an awesome community, and we want to make it more special for everyone. You may know that Thoreau's mascot is Henry the Husky. We started to see him more around the school, and that helps increase school spirit, thank you.
My name is Shemia Ladipal, and here are four ideas that the Thoreau Student Council has that would elevate the student experience in Concord. One, eating from the lunch options at school is a, is a stress-free way to eat lunch at school, and it's easy to order and have your lunch pre-made. But not every kid can eat the things on the menu due to allergies. Like, for example, one to six percent of the population cannot eat food that has gluten inside it, like pizza, pasta, breads, and wheat. I suggest expanding the food choices to have everyone eat what they want at school. Two, I think having more school events and fundraisers would have the students having fun and give them something to look forward to. The fundraisers would help the school's goals of giving back to the community. Three, creating an official sports team for the schools would benefit the students by getting more kids involved in a team group and helping kids work together. It would also teach kids to be good team players and to get their kids from different schools to see and start to know each other. Four, having a science fair would have kids to be excited to create a project in groups or by themselves. It would have kids think out of the box and be creative to make their own project.
Hi, my name is Anna Ashrafi. Here are some ideas for Thoreau School. We should have playground toys to that everyone can share. We should have playground rules on a sign outside. We should have water. We fill stations on all, all levels, thank you.
Hello, my name Hello, my name is Anaya Rana. In our previous student council meeting, a few members of the PTG and superintendent joined us. When we met with the PTG, we decided the color of our Thoreau school shirts. We picked Carolina blue, which is a type of light blue. We also discussed some ideas for new fifth grade school events. The superintendent gave us this awesome opportunity, so we can share what we have been doing in student council, so I would like to give a big thanks to our superintendent. In our meeting, we also wrote down some ideas to improve our Thoreau school, which includes things like more and better lunch options, after-school clubs, and more field trips. Thank you.
This is people at the school committee, children at the school committee.
Everybody?
Yeah, wow. Wow, I mean, you guys have taught us so much, another big round. We actually took a few notes, because I think we could use your notes on how to be great leaders, and I loved what you said, self-confidence, be an upstander, you had so many things that you can really teach us, and if possible, if you'd like to send all of those ideas to us, we could maybe use some of those on our new school committee website next year, when that comes out. But it was really, really great, you were very brave coming up here, I know it's a little intimidating to be in front of a microphone, I think all of us feel that every week, and you are on TV, so you can watch for yourself on YouTube and tell your parents too. All of our meetings are recorded, so you will see yourself on TV on YouTube when Minuteman Media posts it, so I'm really, really proud of you guys, you did a great job. And under the leadership of Mr. Sparks, I mean, this is really something that we have not seen before, is an elementary school student council, so you're a model for our district, so thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the student council or comments?
I'll just say that I, you know, I wrote down many of the ideas, and I think you're really gonna have a great rest of the year, first of all, don't wanna rush fifth grade too much. So, really enjoy it, and your roles, and communicating with your classrooms, I think that's just a nice circle, getting feedback, and you're gonna build a wonderful infrastructure for next year's team, so you're really lucky to be the first ones to do this.
Now, now that you are student council members, how many of you, perhaps a show of hands, have had requests from other students, they bring them to you? Yeah, and I imagine there'll be more of that, right? That's gonna be a big job for you to sort all of, all of those ideas out, thank you.
Who else? Okay, well, thank you so much, you can feel free to stay with us if you'd like to watch our meeting, or I'll give you a moment if you would like to exit, because maybe you wanna go home and eat dinner, I'm not sure, so it's really up to you, we're not offended if you leave.
Have a great night.
Thank you all.
It's amazing. I think our meetings always start out better when we see kids and realize why we're all here, so thank you. Yeah, it was great, yeah, that is definitely the why, right.
Very exciting.
Okay, on to our viewers in the room and at home, we'll give them a couple more minutes to just exit.
We're not insulted that they don't wanna stay.
No, no, we're not at all, not at all. All right, so now we are on to public comment, so our public comment period is a period of twenty minutes, and just as a reminder, please use the raise hand feature if you are at home, and if you could state your name and address, you'll have three minutes, and we also have some blue slips from the room, so if you are in the room and you'd like to make public comment, you can give me your blue slips, and we will go back and forth, we will start the room, take one public comment in the room, and then one on Zoom. So, okay, up first, we have Jen Turner. And I think the microphone is still there.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Jen Turner, and I do not live in Concord, but I put my address in Quincy. And I am the executive director of the Robbins House, and so I'm here tonight, because I know that later on in the agenda, there'll be a discussion potentially of talking about the naming of the new Concord Middle School. And we at the Robbins House, along with others in the community, are hoping that you might take a moment to consider naming Ellen Garrison, naming the school after Ellen Garrison. And for those of you who don't know Ellen Garrison, she was born here in Concord in eighteen twenty-three, and she spent her formative years in Concord, she went to school, um, public school in Concord as well. And then, as an adult, she ended up being a teacher in the Friedman Schools during reconstruction, and she taught in places that were hostile to African-Americans in the time period, including places like Maryland, Kansas, North Carolina. And she did that, because she wanted to help formerly enslaved persons gain an education. And she really believed that education was a key to social mobility in the time period for formerly enslaved persons to become equal citizens in the United States at the time. And decades before Rosa Parks, she also ended up courageously desegregating, or attempting to desegregate, a, a, a train station in Baltimore, Maryland. And her case was one of the test cases in the time period, really testing the issue of segregation and desegregation issues in the United States in the time period. And we think that she's a true inspiration, not only to us at the Robbins House, but to Concord, and that her story has not only local resonance, but really national resonance, resonance. We think that it would be wonderful if eventually she could be, a school could be named after her, and she would obviously be the first person of color in Concord's history, having a school named after. And so we just think that it's sort of an important issue that we wanted to raise throughout the community, and to the school committee tonight, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, we'll go online, and I'm just gonna go in order as it appears on my screen, so Tim Alexander, if you could show your video, thank you.
Hey, good evenings, my name is Tim Alexander, address is one seven two Ministerial Drive in West Concord. I, I just wanted to comment tonight and voice my support for the proposal to build proper facilities and bathrooms at the lower fields of the high school complex. It was actually, I, I had, it wasn't really on my radar until I read about it in The Bridge a few weeks ago, and I'm really glad to see it on the agenda here this evening as well, and look forward to learning more. My family's heavy users of that lower field complex, I have four kids in the schools, two at the high school, one at the middle school, and one at Thoreau. And so, whether it's sporting or activities, and, and, and I think, you know, interestingly, not just during the school year, but during the summer as well, my family's often down in that lower field complex, both playing and spectating. And so, I know, you know, don't have to tell you, you've already learned and are well aware of the sort of temporary and sort of, maybe insufficient nature of the current bathroom facilities down there. It's one thing for certainly our kids, another thing for the spectators, including, you know, some, our, our older grandparents who are less mobile. And so, yeah, again, given, given the location, the things you already know about the nature of the complex down there, its proximity to the school, et cetera, I just wanted to make sure, you know, to, to voice my support for the proposal, as you're contemplating, I'm sure, a ton of different capital improvements across the different school campuses, so that was it, thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Joe Plumbo.
Oh, good.
If you can please keep your microphone muted, thank you.
Oh, it was online, it's like, I didn't say that. Joe Plumbo, seven three seven Lexington Road. Thanks a lot for, I know that on your agenda later tonight, I had a really nice conversation earlier this week with understanding that you're gonna begin considering, as a board, should you consider naming the school something other than Concord Middle School. So I'm here both as myself as a citizen of Concord, but also as a member of the Board of Robbins House, and also as one of the co-chairs of the Concord DEI Commission. We just wanted to let you know that this is a super important issue, and I've talked to Lori before, and I've talked to many of you. I mean, I know, and as Jen just mentioned, the power of education to transform people's lives. I grew up super poor in Concord, and if it wasn't for the education, I'd gotta conquer public schools. I don't think I would ever make a life for myself, but Ripley School and Sanborn Middle and CCHS helped me do that. And I know that in my work as an educator, I always continually saw how public schools help break the cycle of poverty, and in all my work at schools in very troubled areas, that we always saw that happen. And then when I think of Jen talking about Ellen's story, you know, Ellen's, Ellen Garrison, her family were one of the first free black families in Concord, and how the education she got from Concord Public Schools made her have some of the skills as a reader and an excellent writer that allowed her to go to Boston, and allowed her to do all those amazing things that Jen talked about. And she dedicated her life to be an educator. We have this wonderful quote from her, where she said, "Some people say work, work, work is their motto, my motto is educate, educate, educate." So you need to hear her words, and you read her words, it's such a like, so it's a clear alignment and impact on the power of public education to transform students' lives, and her devoting her whole life to teaching people how to be literate. So I know that you only began the discussion, I know you're not deciding tonight, I just know you're beginning to think about thinking, about opening the school, and I just hope that, the naming the school after her, I just hope that as you continue this process, you remember the power of the work you do, and how the power of what is the message a school sends, you know, those students who are just here, they got a message from that school that they were important. And we gave them that message as well, how a building's named, and the climate and culture of a building also can give that message, and just to be the thought, you know, you can only be first once, and this would be the chance for you guys as leaders to be first, and really, in four hundred years, name a building after a person of color, Concord's never done it, seems like it's about time you could be the folks that do that, so thanks for the weeks ahead as you consider this, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll go online to Justin Moy.
Hello, oh, there we go, okay. Hi, everybody, I'm Justin Moy, three zero five Ministerial Drive. And I just wanted to say that I'm really excited that you are considering construction of bathrooms at the CCHS Fields Facility, and I'm especially excited that you're considering the construction of accessible bathrooms in that facility. I think one of the big important things that we've seen is that there's like no bathrooms there, and they are incredibly far away from CCHS. I know for myself, in my daily life, I need to plan around when I go to the bathroom, and having bathrooms close to the fields would be really good. My sister, she's a junior right now at CCHS, and looking towards the next year, you know, graduation's coming up, but not just for her, and not just me watching it, but grandparents, parents, people with mobility issues. And being able to be comfortable at an event, I think will be very important for everybody around there. The other thing too, is that having those bathrooms and being there will show that we are committed to including everybody. The other thing too is that having those bathrooms and being there will show that we are committed, uh, to including everybody. Um, and ensuring that we are leading. If we look at the dual county already, we see so many of our peer towns already have these facilities and we don't. And we built our high school in 2018. Look at when all of these other places were completed. So, I just wanted to say that I support the construction of these new bathrooms and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have, uh, Jan Power.
Hi, I'm Jan Power, 73 Coburn Hill Road. And I just wanted to express my support for the idea of naming the Concord Middle School after Ellen Garrison. I think she, for all the aforementioned reasons, um, would be a great person to, um, who's, to have the name on the tongues of people on a regular basis and for people to ask years from now, who's Ellen Garrison? So, I think, um, I just wanted to express support for that. Thanks.
Yeah. I would ask that if anyone online, could you please mute your microphone? I think we're hearing from Sue St. Croix. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Sherri Barzen.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Barzen, 60 Hubbard Street. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council. And the council wants to add our support that the new Concord Middle School be named the Garrison School in honor of Ellen Garrison. Rob Morrison, who is a council member and a past co-chair of the Human Rights Council, wrote in an opinion letter to the bridge in May of this year, quote, "The names of the Willard, Thoreau, Alcat, Peabody and Sanborn Schools remind students of the contributions of past Concordians. And because of Ellen's courage, place in history and dedication to education, it is fitting to name the new school in her honor." End quote. "What better name could we choose for a Concord school than that of a woman of color who was a native Concordian and dedicated her life to the education and civil rights for all? She is someone inspiring to both students and educators and we think it's high time for Concord to recognize her contributions and name the new middle school, the Garrison School, in her honor." Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Haggerty.
Good evening, uh, Kristen Haggerty, 95 Revolutionary Road. And I have two comments. Uh, one is about the naming of the middle school. I'm really excited that, uh, you will begin this discussion and I too support Ellen Garrison as a name. So, but most of all, I'm looking forward to the discussion that will happen and the participation of the public for when you get to that point. Uh, the second comment I have is about the amenities building. I have listened intently to the discussions that this committee has had about them and what I would encourage, uh, the committee to do, and I know you're talking about the capital budget for CPS tonight, is it's not abundantly clear all of the, um, all of the capital outlay that is expected to happen in the next year, three years, five years, decade, 20 years. Um, and so, when we keep considering, well, this is just another 2 million, it's just another here and there. I did appreciate the committee's discussion of a phased approach, um, so that it was a little bit more palatable to the community. Nobody is disputing the, the need for accessible restrooms and, um, but I do want to make sure that it's within the context of a greater plan, um, so that there's not a continued, you know, well, this came up and, you know, we, we didn't see it coming or this has been discussed for seven years and we knew this was coming, but somehow we have that long range view of, these are all the capital outlays that we can expect. I know I've already heard the turf talked about. Um, so if we can kind of get a bigger picture of all of the expenses that the residents and, and probably the, the students who are attending now and might become, you know, tax paying residents in the future can expect to pay, that would be really helpful for when, uh, new approvals are being sought. Thank you.
Okay. Um, next up, we have Elizabeth Frank.
Hi there. Um, thanks so much. Um, so Elizabeth Frank, uh, 1283 Elm Street in Concord. Um, and I'm just one more voice here, um, encouraging you all to consider naming the middle school after Ellen Garrison. Although it can seem like a small thing, I believe that symbols like school names can have a large impact on the community and the people in it. It's a rare opportunity to be able to name a building in Concord and I'd love to see this opportunity to honor this amazing educator, civil rights activist and woman of color. It would be a great way to make, to show our commitment to making Concord a more welcoming place where people of all races feel like they belong. I realized that the school committee, what I believe I've heard is that they have a policy to not name schools when there is only one of that school. Um, and I would just strongly encourage you to consider making an exception to this policy, um, given the positive impact the school naming could have on students and on our entire community. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Alexa, how, how many minutes are we in?
We're at like 18 and a half. You can do one more.
One more. Okay, I can do one more if it's quick. And I believe that I did skip you, Betsy. So, I will ask Betsy, if you could be brief.
Yes, um, Betsy Olson Mikowski, uh, 1741 Wedgwood Common. Um, and I'm just echoing, um, the request to consider Ellen Garrison um, in the naming of the new middle school. And just the more that I learn about her, the more, um, inspired I have become. And I think it's really phenomenal that she's the native of Concord. So, I'm just adding my support to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we at 20 or 20 minutes? Okay. So, anyone who did not get a chance to speak, our public comment period has ended. You can feel free to send your remarks, um, by email or come to our next meeting. And we will close up public comment. And moving on to our consent agenda. So, we have the consent agenda in front of us. So, it entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? On favor? Actually, Sharon is on, so we need to do a roll call vote.
Thank you. Anderson, I for both.
Both I for both committees.
Morano, I for both.
Patel, I for region.
Randy, I for both.
Frank and I for both.
Whit, I for region.
Alright, we're getting better at that all the practice. I don't know. Alright, and on to correspondence. Um, I will ask Alexa to do.
Sure, at CPS we have.
Sorry, yep.
At CPS, we had five pieces of correspondence, all about a middle school maybe.
And at the region, we had one, two, three, four, five, six pieces of correspondence about a potential cell tower on the campus and one piece of correspondence from a school committee member from another town inquiring about our school calendar. Alright. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Hunter for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. A few highlights of the last few weeks and some things looking ahead. Yesterday, Justin Cameron and I had the absolute thrill of, uh, touring the construction site with the student building committee. About 10 students in grades five through seven who will have the privilege of, uh, learning in the new building. Uh, we were outside on the site with the, um, design team, Hill, which was our OPM and the construction, uh, crew as well. We get to watch some live steel go up and swing in the wind from the crane and it's just really exciting. So, they're, they're an engaged group and they'll continue to get opportunities to do that. And similar to the students you heard tonight, they're gathering feedback from their peers and going to be working with Mr. Cameron and I on different ideas they have. They're clearly very excited for the interior of the building and some of the uh, options they might have for what that could turn into. So, uh, last week, the playbook initiative happened for the first of three times schoolwide at the middle schools. So, another impressive moment of listening to kids talk about scenarios that involve race and other types of, um, very difficult situations and how they would handle it. Embedded in that, which I think was a noteworthy moment, was the restorative community and circle work that we've been doing as a district. As an opening piece was the community circle where students in those small groups got to share. We might have to do a school committee restorative circle at some point, yeah. Just so you all get to experience what, what we're doing with children and adults. Um, deeper learning, the, uh, consultants from Harvard will be starting to meet with the high school leadership team, Kristen and I, next week to really start to define a starting place. First of all, a common definition of deeper learning and then you, you really have to pick a place to start to make it a doable endeavor. Uh, and then, just at the elementaries, responsive classroom is up and running as well as Five Fly Five quite successfully. I think it's important to note that that program is really laid in with the same type of inclusive belonging, work, circles, language, all of those are, are really embedded throughout. Um, and we're having a lot of, uh, ongoing conversation about early literacy and what that looks like and really crafting a vision now that we're further into both the work on foundation, some of the other core pieces, as well as our training and PD at varying levels at each school. And really, what, what are we aiming to have that look like so that all the really important evidence-based work is there? As well as the love of reading and how we're going to put that all together into a really cohesive, strong, um, evidence-based literacy program at the elementary school. So, more to come on all of that, but those are our ongoing, uh, discussions right now.
Do you have anything? An update?
No, I didn't have any updates.
I don't have any updates from any of their, um.
I was going to ask Alexa to give us a full update on the finance committee meeting and then where we're going. Budget timeline. I was surprised we didn't have an action item on the, you know, discussion here.
So, the, I sent you all, I think, uh, an update by email. The finance committee, um, primarily due to the residential tax exemption was not able to issue a preliminary guideline. They are hoping to, um, issue a guideline on November 27th, I think.
2016.
No, the 27th. That's their final guideline. So, um, so we will, um, we will meet with them. You guys are going to receive some updates. Um, there has been, I was going to do this via email, but I suppose I'll do it here. Last year, the schedule that we adhered to in the fall, um, was sort of, was by the book according to, um, that past best practice, as well as when we were talking about capital, uh, the recommendations by the joint capital or the Capital Planning Task Force. This year, um, there's been a little bit of confusion because we're not following, um, those recommendations to the letter. We're following some things, but not others. For example, you guys will all have noticed, we did not have a joint meeting with the select board this year in September, which was part of, um, the recommendations that came out of the capital task force. So, we're, you know, so, so truthfully, there's just been, I had that on for the, for the timer, which we didn't need tonight. So, sorry about that. Um, and so, so next week, um, we had thought, good news for you, Carrie Patel, that the meeting on the 14th would be joint between, uh, the finance committee, the select board and the school committee. It turns out, we're not going to hold a joint meeting. Dr. Hunter will attend that meeting along with the town manager, but we do not have to be in session at 7:00 PM. We will still hold our budget meeting at 5:00. Um, and the 16th will be a continuation with the, of the discussion with the finance committee that was on the 26th. So.
So, just to reconfirm, we are not meeting at 7:00?
You don't need to meet at 7:00 anymore. You're, we're going to get an update. We do need to have a leadership call, I think, between some of the boards. Just to confirm sort of what we're going to be doing in the future, but.
So, who's going to be meeting? I'm confused.
And what? The finance, it's, it's a finance, it's a finance committee meeting to hear.
The 16th.
The 14th.
14th.
The 14th will be a finance committee meeting where Carrie Lefleur and Lori Hunter will present and Bob Conry will present, uh, tier one, two and three capital, which again is a depart, it's, it's, you know, we, we, again, we, last year, we followed everything to the letter of the recommendations. This year, we're kind of cherry picking or the finance committee is kind of cherry picking what, what they want to see and do and, um, and that's fine. But, so, yeah, so we thought it was going to be the joint meeting that was, that is, that we had last year on December 5th, if you all remember. But it's not. It's just going to be, um.
So, we, we will, we haven't seen the presentation?
No, so we have a budget meeting at 5:00 that same night.
And we'll, we'll see all the material?
Yeah, so on the 14th, we're only, in the budget meeting, you're going to talk about all things budget and get updates as to where we are. It will be the preview of what we will talk with.
So, we just saw the capital.
Meeting about on the 16th. The evening of the 14th, we're only talking capital with the FinCom and you're.
We saw it our last night.
Right, but, so, but we don't really have a five-year capital plan because we're waiting for this study.
Correct.
What's the timeline on that study?
Uh, we've selected a firm.
We talked, we talked about the, the last meeting. The facility study will come out in.
There's, there's going to be working on it. We have a meeting starting this month.
Right, so we'll get that in the spring. So, we're only showing capital, which you guys saw last week for this year. The FY 25, sorry, for the FY 25. So, that is what we're going to show to the finance committee on the 14th. As well as regional capital, which will just be the amenities article.
But we, we have nothing else on the horizon for the region?
We, we don't want to put things on the horizon specifically because I think, I think, if I'm answering correctly for you guys and maybe you just want to take the answer, there could be things that could be prioritized. However, we don't want to, the, the idea was we wouldn't put those out in the event that findings from the facility, the comprehensive facility study became more urgent. Um, we wanted to be able to defer to that study as we planned for the future. Is that articulating it well, do you think, Lori?
That's certainly true for CPS.
Yes, for CPS.
Yeah. With the region, there's big projects that you're already talking about and then that same pattern is going to repeat itself in a couple of years when you need to do a full facility study because the building will be 10 years old.
There is a sense of urgency to really try to get a better, better future outlook because we have very, some headwinds about money in Concord.
And sure, and I think that's precisely why we're looking at the facility study. So, we get a dispassionate, objective, professional view as to what we should.
It doesn't seem like a good investment by, in the finance committee's time when we don't have the numbers yet from the schools.
You were asked to attend, okay, on this night, yeah, the information we had.
Yeah, right, because I, it didn't sound like even Ms. Lefleur was confident that she could do her capital plan. Either her, you know.
Yeah, so we, it's their meeting. We've been invited. So, we're, we're going to do what we can with the information that we have. And I think, and I think there is some good information, um, you know, especially for next year. We've all seen that. Um, and I think, you know, going forward, um, I think this facilities study is going to be unbelievably invaluable for next year as we do this exercise. It's just going to be all the better.
CPS.
So, then what is the timeline for the budget process? So, we, we have, this is unprecedented. We almost always get a preliminary guideline.
Right.
Right.
So, we're not, so, would, will we see the whole budget?
Sure, we're going to see the budget at our December 5th. I think it's still that I said the 5th earlier. Um, the, our December 5th meeting, which will be a budget meeting as well as a joint meeting. And that's the, so we're going to be able to see that, um, as a group together on the 5th.
So, that'll be first look at a proposal from the administration.
Superintendent's recommended.
Thank you.
Then, when would the public hearing be?
Right now, it's tentatively slated for the 19th. I think all of you as a committee need to decide if you need a December 12th meeting.
Right.
Before we wrap up here.
Or another, yeah, another time.
And remember, we opted not to have that meeting on the 21st, which is the week of Thanksgiving.
No, I understand.
Just because, you know, I mean.
Well, they don't have a guideline until.
Yeah.
They won't even have the guideline until the 27th and that will be the final guideline.
And then just.
I think budgets have a reasonable importance, um, to a school committee's functioning and responsibility. I'd advocate for a meeting on the 12th. I don't, I don't see how we can rush this through or even try to rush things. Why, why would we do that? Let's get that on the books now. What do you think, folks?
Thanks, good.
And there is one other question. So, we lost a policy meeting and.
We're, we're going to, we just haven't rescheduled it. I don't think there's been an opportunity for Sharon to sit down with Lori to get that on. We're not losing anything.
We're not losing anything.
At some point, I think I saw March 26th at the end.
Yeah, there's one in February. I think it's on the schedule and the schedule has changed. So, anything that's highlighted in yellow on your school committee's schedule is kind of tentative. Because I, we're trying to schedule the Boston meeting too. And so, there are a few moving pieces to that. And we don't want to have a policy meeting the night that we go into Boston. So, there, so that's where we're at with the schedule. So, a few moving pieces, but we didn't actually.
I don't think we can get into the conference center early enough to have a policy meeting. So, yes, so that's, we're waiting, I think, on that scheduling to make all that.
A review, maybe just for me, I don't know, uh, 14th and 16th next week. We're 14th at 5:00, we look at, uh, tier one, two, three, but not really because we're going to withhold some stuff until we know more. And then at 7:00, what happens?
You're free to go.
Free to go. Dr. Hunter will be going to the town.
She's representing the school committee.
Yes, so we are not, we do not. Yeah, so we are not, we do not need to be in session. We had thought that we needed to be. We apparently do not.
Alexa, I will be attending.
Yeah, and any of you are all invited.
Anyone's welcome to attend.
Yeah, I would hope so. As the, the school committee considers budgets important. And then the 16th, what happens?
And I will say, Court, we expected to be in session that night.
Yeah.
And so this was, this is evolving news as of today.
This afternoon.
Literally, yeah.
Attending and deliberating are two different things. Obviously, we all know that.
And the 16th is a continuation, essentially, of the October 26th meeting, where additionally Lori and Bob attended a Finance Committee meeting to talk about the FY 25 budget.
So not capital?
I'm sorry, not capital, no. That's a.
It's a FinCom meeting.
And yes, both are FinCom meetings. I think there was just confusion because we've, you know, disrupted some processes, at least from last year. And that confusion, you know, was mine. So not, we are not in session in either of those, but again, more than welcome to attend.
And from a process perspective, is there any thinking on the part of this committee that any generating and sharing of ideas about budget directions, priorities, would move toward the administration before the administration makes its first recommendation to us? Or are we strictly in a reactive mode in that, in that budget process?
Well, I would suggest that I don't think the amenities building, for example. Well, I mean, I guess it was sort of reactive, you know, we've been proactive, I think, at the region. I think we can, we always have the opportunity to be proactive. I think that, you know, I don't, again, I speak only for myself. I certainly wouldn't know, you know, the, wherein a life, a boiler was, or, you know, certain systems. I don't think that is kind of the knowledge that we have. So I do think it's predominantly reactive as we talk about. I think most of our capital is, 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 is maintenance, you know, so that it doesn't become deferred maintenance that end up, you know, causing problems. And I think in that regard, certainly, I would find we'd be reactive. We have facilities managers and, and whatnot that, that handle that. In terms of looking to things we might want beyond maintenance, I think certainly this, it would be our, in, in our purview to talk about those types of things.
Yeah, I was thinking, and not of capital, rather of how we want our schools to function, what we want them to prioritize, what kind of outcomes and achievements we're seeking. So it just, it's a question about process and about when and how that kind of dialogue might occur between us and the administration.
Sure, I mean, I.
Post-December 5, that's different than if there's something proceeding December 5, when December 5, things have already been committed to a piece of paper. You recall last year, the first time we saw the proposal, it was titled Final Budget, which wasn't correct, of course, but that was the titling of the thing. And it, it spoke to the fact that maybe a school committee didn't have the opportunity to have the kind of dialogue that could really benefit the administration.
Yeah.
We won't know unless we try.
Yeah, and I think.
Well, I do feel like we get things that say superintendent's recommended budget. So it is the recommendation of the budget and the budget, you know, as I see it, it, we, Dr. Hunter looks at the strategic plan, the goals in the strategic plan. We see all of that in the budget work that happens.
Absolutely.
So I think the budget workshop, maybe next week, will be an opportunity to maybe have some of those conversations.
That'd be great.
And also too, I think it is important for us, and, and I've tried to articulate this. I think the goals that we put forth as a body, which align certainly with the strategic plan, and they certainly align with the superintendent's goals, but they are our own. I think hope signal to you guys, when you're creating your budgets, what we value and what we prioritize. And I think that's a really important role. I think that's why we try to do it early, you know, in August, so that we start the year before you guys are doing your budgets, so that you all have an understanding of, like you said, how we want our schools to function and where we want to be and what we are, in fact, prioritizing. And, you know, I think, you know, Carrie, certainly this year, it's a little different. We're doing more of a structured agenda for our budget discussions. Last year, we allotted time that was more unstructured. But to echo someone's point, I think the time for that will be in these budget discussions.
Excellent.
And Sharon, it looks like Sharon's got a hand raised.
Hi, I just want to clarify, the policy meeting for March is on the 26th. That was the date we rescheduled.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's one in February. There's one in February also, I believe.
Right, there's also one in February, correct.
Can you remind us of the date, Sharon, if you have it in front of you?
Sure, that's the 6th, February 6th.
Great.
Thanks, Sharon.
Welcome. All right.
I just wanted to state, I, because I know it's off a normal schedule. CPS, Carlisle Public Schools has a, a school committee meeting, December 12th, which is a Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Carlisle has, I mean, typically, your Wednesdays.
We're always Wednesday these last two months. We just had, Chair had a thing, and then in December, oh, Jim's got.
Thank you for that, Carrie. That's so helpful.
What time is your meeting on the 12th?
7:00.
7:00. So if we did have a meeting, we could maybe have a 5 o'clock, and Carlisle could zoom in if we needed one, something like that?
I wouldn't build it. I'm on a flight at 5 o'clock, but.
On the 12th.
I could miss it if you.
Okay.
I'm lost, I don't care.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we might have an issue with the 12th. Okay, so we'll go back to the drawing board should we need another meeting. Okay. And the only thing I had to report, MASC conference is coming up this week. Carrie, thank you for going and being representative there. We have the Chair's Breakfast next week that Alexa and I will attend. And Alexa and I are looking to reschedule our roundtable, because we were gonna have that this week. But I will see, say that has been really invaluable to us. I had a Chair from Salisbury reach out to me today, asking questions about, you know, some of the things that we do, and we can share information. So that's actually been really helpful. And I think that's all I had. Anyone else have any reports? Are we good? Okay. All right, and on to, Kristen Anderson is going to give us her presentation of the MCAS data. And I will let you introduce this and tee it up to us. This is the first time that some of our members are seeing this. Because we really felt as though the narrative has to go with the slides, so.
All right, so, hello. I'm actually gonna talk towards my computer, since that's where the slides are. So it's a great little awkward Zoom room thing. So I am gonna just give you an overview, sort of 40,000 foot, because I have a much more detailed report coming on our math, A to 12, in December 19th at the meeting, and then on literacy, ELA, English Language Arts, on January 9th. And at both of those meetings, all the specialists from the elementary schools and the department chairs from the middle school and high school will be in attendance. And we'll be able to show you the data from our new platform, Open Architects. And you can see how we play with data and how they've been able, using this new platform, to dig in, do item analysis, curriculum spanned analysis, grade level analysis, and really identify where our strengths are, and more importantly, where we really need to grow. And then they'll let you know what our plans are to make improvements. So, for example, the new, the middle school has identified that they want one consistent curriculum for grades 6, 7, and 8. So we'll get really much more into that. December 19th is the math, and then January 9th is the literacy. So this is today, really a party, because we have a lot to celebrate. And let me just show you. So I have about 20 slides here, and happy to share them out in any way that we can. And I just have so much good news. Let me see if I can get this. There we go.
And Kristen, do you want questions during the presentation or at the end?
Why don't we do them at the end?
Okay.
And then in case I answer the question as we go along. All right, so every year, except for the last couple of years, the state determines accountability levels. And so we've generally been really good, but we haven't had those for the past couple of years because of MCAS. So in 20, sorry, because of COVID. So in 2020, we didn't have MCAS at all because of COVID. In 2021, we had partial MCAS. And then 2022, we had a full giving of the exam. So in grades 3 through 8, in math, English, and then in grade 5 and 8 in science. And then at the high school, of course, we take it in grade 10. We take it in English, math, and science, and those are the ones that students have to pass to get their competency determination to be able to graduate. So this last year, 2022, was seen as the baseline year. And so we didn't have the accountability measures. And so now, this year, 2023, the spring administration, we have our new accountability levels. Okay, so this is a slide that shows exactly what I just said about what, when the tests were given. So, and I just, I really wanted to point out that part of taking these tests is, being successful in these tests is learning how to literally take a standardized test. And so some of the students, for example, the grade 10 students in 2022, had not taken an MCAS or any standardized test since grade 7. So they really had lost that practice. And we saw this across the state with scores that went down, both from interrupted schooling due to the pandemic, and also they hadn't practiced about how to take a standardized test. So, so that's the testing over the last five years. So I am happy to report, this is the first part of the party, that all of five of our schools got an overall classification. You can see it in the top right of your screen, of not requiring assistance or intervention. So this is great. That means both our achievement scores and our growth scores for every population, and I'll talk about this more, are on target. That is huge, huge, huge. It's not what I expected to be able to report to you this year. I thought we'd be another year out from that. So we, as they said, we met or exceeded all of our targets. So that's amazing. And there's more data there. I can talk about it if you're interested. So since the high school is a separate district, it gets reported separately. And again, overall, the classification is not requiring assistance or intervention, meaning we don't have any reports to do. We don't have to put into place any plans that say how we're gonna improve. So we're really good to go. You can see that 98% of the possible points, nobody gets that. That's fantastic. So very excited for all the students. So this is the big part. Even though it's in black and white, it should have like rainbows and sparkles here, because every single one of these points is something to be celebrated. And we just give incredible kudos to our staff, you know, our educators, our administrators, who have worked tirelessly for the last three or four years with the pandemic, but really in the last year to get us to this bounce back. So the first bullet point is that average student achievement in every single subject is back or almost back within five points on a 500-point scale to pre-pandemic levels. So that's in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. And as you know, science is a, is a relative strength for us. We were close to that last year in science, but the real big jumps have happened in ELA and math. Second bullet point is that average student achievement at every grade level is back or almost back within six points to pre-pandemic levels. And I'll show you a lot of charts there. So it's not just the endpoint. It's not just the 10th graders. It's at every grade level. And then this is the one, I thought, you know, I might see someone get up and do a jig for the third bullet point, because I know this is something that we focus on a lot, which is our subgroups and the achievement and growth of our subgroups. So here in Concord, we have statistically significant populations. So they count as subgroups of students with disabilities, English language learners, low-income, Black, Latino, Asian, and multi-ethnic. And I'm happy to report that in every subgroup, every single one, we are back or almost back to within pre-pandemic levels. That's huge. That's wonderful. I don't know if you remember, last year, when I gave the same report, we noted the decline of all students in terms, the average student in terms of the pandemic learning loss, but our historically marginalized group were much more impacted by the pandemic than even our whole population. So this is just incredible. So the next one, as a statistician, this is, makes me really excited. Student growth percentiles, so increased in a range from 2% to 10% increase in student growth. So that's the value added. That's the Concord Public Schools at work. And then I already explained that all of our schools are not requiring assistance, because we are meeting or exceeding all of our achievement targets and all of our growth targets. So now the next, I think, 10 slides are graphs of what I just described. So in blue on all the graphs, you'll see Concord Public Schools 2019 scores. And then in red, you'll see last spring scores 2023. And you can see that they're at or within five, six points of where we were in 2019. And as we, you know, dig through the grade levels, you'll remember that these are different students. So it's even more incredible, because these kids who are taking it in 2023 were more impacted by the pandemic than the kids who took it than we're comparing them to. So this is my favorite slide. Bell's whistles, because I, as someone who's been reporting on MCAS results since MCAS was implemented, I think in 1995, I think that was the first year. I've never seen a growth score like this ever. So if you see the ELA growth, we had a mean student growth percent in ELA of 50% and it jumped in one year to 60%. So that's enormous. That's 10% growth. I'm sorry, I think I said in one year, in that time span, in the four years. So that's huge, huge growth. I've never seen anything like it. I haven't even really seen half of that. So the math growth also really, really impressive. So we're really excited about this. That's Concord Public Schools. And then here are the students groups I described. This slide is just in blue, it's just giving you the numbers of students in all those categories for Concord Public Schools, so you can look at the achievement levels. This is the English Language Arts, ELA, for Concord Public Schools. And you can see we are at, exceeding, or within five points of, in, in all of our subgroups. So just really, really excited about that. Here's the math. Very similar. And that's Concord Public Schools, and the high school is right after this. And this is science. And as I said, science is a generally strength for us. We spend a lot of time on it in elementary schools, and that's unusual. Of course, we have the STEAM lab as well. And we have science in our middle school as often as we have math and English. So that's also helping us have it be a strength for us. All right, and same kind of results at the high school in ELA, average composite scaled score, math, and science. And I just make a note that, I don't know if you remember, that we had a new version of MCAS over the past couple of years in every subject, and science was the last subject. So that's why we had to compare it to 2022, because that was the last time that the new test was given. So again, really great student growth percentiles, ELA growth, 5%. And in math, we have 6%. So great, great scores. Again, those are all 10th graders taking it. And so we're not comparing the same literal groups of students, but the population taking the test is over 200, which is enough students. So we feel like we can say definitively that we're back. Here are the student groups at the high school. As you can see, some of them are really low numbers of students, so they wouldn't count towards any determination for us. numbers of students, so they wouldn't count towards any uh determination for us. And again, our, our data by subgroup. Here's the math for the high school.
And Lori did send these slides in your school committee email, so you'll also have these review after the meeting?
And science. And I should just note at the high school level, um, schools decide which uh type of science students take the MCAS in. And we're like, I would say, at least fifty percent of the schools in Massachusetts. We choose to take it in biology. Um, but for example, where my kids went to school in Newton, they take it in physics. It's really up to the order of the classes that are, are given.
And so like in, in towns like Newton, I think Bedford does it too. They take like a physical science as ninth graders. Is that why they do it?
Physical science in ninth grade and they take the MCAS in ninth grade.
In ninth grade and not tenth, okay.
Yep.
Thanks for that.
And so this is showing you sort of the, the progression over the last four years of, of where our scores have been. So as a, as a second to last slide, a penultimate slide, um, so what are we gonna do with these results? So we have poured them all into our new data platform, which is called our Open Architects. So I have all the MCAS scores in there, but we also have all the STAR scores uh in reading and math. We have all the access scores, which are our English learner tests of English proficiency in the four areas of uh reading, writing, speaking and listening. Um, we have all of the, the longer uh English Language Arts Assessment, uh which we call the BAS. Um, or at Willard School, they're using the Teachers College. Um, we have the Foundations, which is the Phonics Unic Assessments. We have the DIBELS. We have lots and lots of data in one platform so that we can look at a kid's profile over the course of their time with us. Uh, and we have that data now. We're just about getting up to about five years of data in there. So we can really look at, at individual learner. We can look at an individual subject. We can look at a subdomain within a subject. We can look at a class. Um, so it's really, you're gonna love seeing that platform. So we look at it to see any trends and patterns. We use um a technique uh patented at the Harvard Graduate School of Education called Data Wise. It's a way to look at data um with groups of people to see what you notice and what you wonder without jumping to conclusions. Um, so we do that. We analyze the grade level data with the teachers. Um, the school data with the school leadership teams. Uh, we are looking at the curriculum, if there's gaps in the curriculum. Um, you know, what we teach and when we teach it is also really important. Um, at the approach that we're taking, are there some subgroups that are getting it? The way we're doing it and some that are not. Can we change how we're doing that? Uh, we analyze student level data to support those who scored uh partially meeting or not meeting. Uh, so for every student who didn't make it to the benchmark, um, we have a plan in place. So that's at the elementary school and the middle school. Um, it's usually something we call the MTSS pro- process, which we're giving them support in English Language Arts um in math, or it might be part of their IEP. Um, there's different ways to get to uh help students to get to that achievement level. Um, and then um uh, at the high school, we're actually legally required. If a student is not meeting the benchmark when they take it in tenth grade, we come up with a student success plan, they're called SSPs, and we in the past had to formally turn these in for every individual kid who wasn't making. Um, now that we're at uh meeting or exceeding all our benchmarks, we don't turn them in. They sort of trust us to say that we're, we're doing it. Um, so um by the time that students are through uh the high school, um, everybody is on a good uh path. So um, and then we used, luckily, we got the raw data over the summer um from the MCAS. So we use it to inform what we call our BOYs, the Beginning of Year Assessments. So we were placing kids into groups to get intervention based on the MCAS data, the raw data that we saw. So we didn't know how we did overall, um, but we knew who was gonna need help. Does that make sense? And then lastly, I just wanna underscore what I said at the beginning, which is this was an enormous team effort of hundreds of educators working diligently with thousands of students to get these kind of results. And you know, I, I especially want to underline that because folks were already tired. We had already figured out how to run a school district during a pandemic. And now we're working on these kids haven't had all the learning time that they needed. So how are we gonna do this double time? And they figured it out. However, that happened. So we're really uh excited and thankful and appreciative. That's it.
That's great, which is why we wanted Kristen to share this in live, real time with us. Cause I do think that when you just look at the charts and the graphs and, you know, you start interpreting it yourself and not really realizing, you know, where we're at. Um, does anyone have any questions? I, I have a couple, but I'll, I'll leave it to everyone first.
Yeah, I, I mostly just have a comment. Um, I, first of all, congratulations to everyone. I feel like this is really amazing to see. Um, and I know that this is a high level presentation, as you said, so I'll be really interested in really diving into the math and literacy subsegments and really understanding the specifics. But um, just, I, I, so high level presentation, high level comment. I think it's really wonderful to see um such gains and um, uh, there's always learning that we can do from the, from these, but I, I think you're right to take a moment to celebrate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Cynthia? Yeah, go ahead.
So do we get the, uh, do we take the Carlisle eighth grade results and also look through them?
We have access to all of them. Yep.
Right. So um, the other thing is, are you going to be providing us any benchmarking to, with peer schools?
We have it if you're interested in it.
Well, I mean, I think it'd be interesting to present it. And the one other comment, I know you guys like to put it all together, but I think it, it would be so much more useful to our Carlisle uh members if we just do the high school separately and then do Concord Public Schools as part of a Concord meeting. So I'll just, I think it's a lot to digest to do it all at once, honestly. Um, and I, I'd really like to just look at the high school separately. Um, and then look at our A, eight students in the Concord meeting. So you, the chairs, figure that out.
Yeah, we, we had that discussion prior and we chose to keep it all together.
Well, this presentation, but we're talking about.
Presentation, yes. This presentation, we decided to do it all together.
Yeah.
Because I think it's important to see K through twelve kind of where we're at.
Fine with it, but I'm just saying it's a lot and I think it'd be, you know, um, helpful. We sort of separate them and all start to run together. It's a lot of data.
So, yeah, I'm very pleased that we're rebounding the way we intend. Um, so thank you for giving us what you did tonight. Um, can you speak a little to the uh reference to consistent curriculum that you mentioned earlier? If that needs attention, I imagine it needs careful long-term attention, but it might also need short-term intervention. I don't know. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you a little preview. Um, because on the December nineteenth, Debbie Harmon, the middle school math chair, will come and, and say in much greater detail uh what I'm about to say. But um, we've had essentially uh one curriculum that we're teaching at sixth grade, um, a published curriculum, Everyday Math. We had a second one at seventh grade, a lot of teacher-created materials at seventh grade. At eighth grade, we've been using a uh Department of Ed approved curriculum called Envision. Um, and the teachers there are really happy with it. Um, and what we noticed in the results is and just looking at the test in general is that uh, there's a lot of code switching for kids to do, meaning like something that's referred to as an equation, um, that's not a great example. Uh, something that's referred to as a proportional quantity, might be a fraction, might be a ratio, proportion in different curricula. So um, that matters, especially if you have trouble learning language. Um, and you have trouble doing that code switching. So we wanted uh to find a curriculum that was consistent for all the grades, sixth, seventh and eighth. And one that was consistent with the MCAS, so that the words that they saw on the MCAS were so uh what we're doing right now is taking that eighth grade curriculum that they've been using uh which is from Savas, a company uh and uh called Envision. And we're pilot testing it at the sixth grade and the seventh grade uh to different extents. Uh, they're still continuing to teach it at the eighth grade. So uh, we're really excited about that. The teachers love where it's going. It has a really good um print component and an online component, which as you know, with math curriculum is really hard to have a good online component. Um, so we're excited about that. But I'll let Debbie talk more about that. So um, there is uh a placeholder in the budget for that. Don't drop on the floor when, whenever that meeting is. Um, yeah, there is a placeholder in the budget for that. But we're, we're just doing the uh pilot testing now. So we've uh pre-assessed the students where they are. Um, and we will post-assess them after we're teaching from this new curriculum. We compare those to the results of the pre and post-assessments that we gave to students last year uh with the same material. So it's, as I said, it's about two hundred students who are doing it. So that is statistically significant. Um, so even though there are different groups of kids at the last year's sixth graders versus this year's sixth graders, for example, um, it's, it's a comparable quantity. So we wanna see if there's value added for this new curriculum.
What's the timetable for the assessment on the pilot?
It takes all year.
So the pilot takes all year and then the assessment follows?
Uh, well, we're assessing it. So it's about every unit. Yeah. Yeah, but the, the teachers make a general decision. Usually you get the feeling around February, March. Um, how things are going. Yeah.
And uh apropos of budget, um, will it, a lot of teacher retraining be required? Or is this gonna be an easy move?
No, it's not. No, they've been having, I went last week, they've been having about between an hour or two hours of training every week since I've started doing this. Yeah, it's not gonna be like that all the time, but it's, it's a big change.
More than code switch. There's also some.
Approach is different. Yeah, yeah.
Interesting. Okay.
And will there be our current teachers training other teachers or is it an outside trainer?
Uh, so we are working right with the company.
Yeah, with the company. Okay.
Produced it. Yeah, yeah. And there's only ten middle school math teachers, so they're um all being trained now.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And as I said, the eighth grade teachers already use the curriculum. Yeah, yeah. And it's used a little bit at the high school as well.
Okay.
Last question. How long have we been using Envision more?
At the eighth grade, um, since right before the pandemic, I wanna say twenty nineteen.
We're a few years in.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else before? Good. All right, let me just look online. Sharon or Domingos, you two are both online if you have any questions. Can you start for screen share, Kristen? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
So I can see if they have any questions or comments. Don't see any. Um, I had one question about the data platform.
Oh, yeah.
So it, it's awesome that you have this data platform to really look at in groups of students, but can you also look at, you are gonna look at individual students. Will that be shared with parents like through a conference? Will they ever see that level of it? Or is it more of an internal analysis that you're using it for?
Yeah, so um, it's funny that you bring that up because we're just uh having parent-teacher conferences this week um, for the elementary school um and uh distributing some of the results from some of the assessments. So we're excited about that. Um, but I, we could eventually use this or we just are still figuring out how to load the data in. So we don't know the power yet.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All right, well, this all seems like really great news. We're looking forward to more in-depth news that are next. So December nineteenth, I believe it's math. And then you said January ninth will be ELA. Great. All right, well, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
All right, we will move on to the CCHS amenities building. First, I'm gonna have to try and screen share this. This is gonna be really exciting for me. Okay. All right, I think I did it. All right. Um, Alexa and I have been on a tour of all of our local schools this past, I don't know, over the past week or so. Um, we met with athletic directors who took us on a tour of their facilities. So I just put this together quickly so that anyone in the public who is listening might have a chance to go through this and to see kind of what we have, what other districts in our league have, and kind of why we're pursuing this article at town meeting. Um, so right, and I'm not gonna read my slides to you because you've all had the slides. So I'm just gonna talk real briefly. And Alexa, you can feel free to jump in at any point. But for those who haven't been to the high school, this is what we currently have for our facilities. And you can see we have two portable restrooms and one accessible restroom down by Memorial Stadium. Um, we don't have any storage really except for underneath the um underneath the bleachers. We, there's a container that I think, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, has some landscaping materials in it. And then we have an area that we do set up concessions at football games only. I don't know of other sports. I don't know if the youth sports set up many type of concessions, but it's a portable pop-up tent that's set up at our high school. So that's kind of where CCHS sits. Um, Alexa and I took a tour of Westford Academy. There were a lot of interesting things we learned there. So their build was done in twenty twenty and the total cost of their building was one point three four million dollars. The entire project was funded with CPC funds. I, I believe it took them two times to get the funding. The first time they were denied and the second time the CPC funded the entire project. They had a ton of community support. They have concessions, concessions, storage, bathrooms and AED machine onsite. Um, they actually have Narcan available in their building also because they really feel like it is for the community. They have a lot of walkers, so you never know what's gonna happen on a school campus, I will say. We, we don't like to think those things happen, but they have the capability there. And they have boosters, clubs that support their concessions. So they do a lot of fundraising for all of their different sports through their concessions. And I would have to say this was our favorite school that we toured. They did a really nice job on their building. It was really thought out. Um, I've included some pictures. They had an existing amenities building that they kept, so they did not take it down. So in it's kind of to the left. If you look at that street view right there of the amenities building, they have another building to the left of it that they store equipment in. They have some athletic training in there. So all of their facilities are pretty much enclosed by the stadium. There are some pictures of their restrooms. This, I, I had other pictures. I, I only shared a few with you. They do have the requisite twenty-two stalls, which is what the plumbing code determines. So in the women's restroom, they had thirteen stalls and they only had hand dryers to cut down on the amount of trash in the restrooms. You know, Bob, Bob's like, oh, this is interesting information. So it really helps with the cleanliness of the restroom when you don't have paper towels. Men's restroom, again, four stalls, four urinals, and they had four sinks in each bathroom. They have a gender-neutral bathroom that is also accessible. So they have accessible restrooms within the women's room, within the men's room, and also the gender-neutral bathroom. They have a lovely concessions area. Um, a lot of the equipment in there was either donated or they found from other schools that, that kind of, they, they found a home for it. So it, and it's nothing super fancy. They have electricity, they have microwaves, they have a coffee urn, um, some refrigeration, and they do have windows on one side. So if parents are working concessions, they can still watch their child play their sports game. But they found that having actually people come to the pull-up door style was the easiest because you don't wanna open up the windows and have a lacrosse ball come at you through the window or something like that. So those windows on the outside facing the field are just for viewing sports. They have a lot of storage in that pre-existing building. So any storage that they have was really in their um other buildings. So they keep their golf carts in there. They have a whole upstairs built of storage. And then the picture on the right is really an athletic training facility. So they repurposed the room and they have, you know, tape and anything else that, that the um athletic trainer might need in that room. If someone needs to be evaluated for a concussion, that's where they would do that. So it's right on their fields. Went to Weston. Weston was also lovely. Um, they just finished their building, I think in 2017, but it was part of a larger building project. So it's hard to determine kind of how much they spent on their, um, amenities building. But the total cost of their project was 4.6 million. They had a very large private donor who donated all of the concrete and what else? Maybe the concrete.
Material.
Like the, like the hardscape type of materials. So any of the brick, any of the concrete, they had a private donor that donated all of that. So it's hard to compare us to Weston for that reason. Um, their stadium also only seats 600, so they do not have to have 22 bathrooms, but they do still have to abide by the plumbing code. They did apply for the variance for the 50%. They have male, female, and family gender neutral bathrooms. Their concessions area is heated, but it's very, the heating that's in these building is, is more of like, um, either the infrared heating or like a fan. It's nothing, it's not like you're going to get baseboard heating and air conditioning. It's not like that at all. It's just very simple heating. Um, all of the buildings are winterized over the winter, so they turn all the water off. And then there are some photos of what they have. They had really lovely lighting on their accessible path. Because I think we struggle a little bit with that in our facility is the lighting down to the football field. The, the new lights as part of the paving products are excellent. Those are very, and that, that area is very well lit. Just some pictures of the restrooms, but again, they don't have nearly as many because the capacity of their stadium is much smaller than ours. And just as a reminder, our capacity is 1800, so they are about a third. And they have concessions area, very simple. You can see the infrared heating that's like mounted to the wall. Again, they have refrigeration, microwaves, the infamous hot dog roller. So basically just need a little bit of electricity in that, um, room.
The, the whole campus is a middle, high school.
It's a middle and high school campus. It's a, it feels like a college campus actually, and they have so many fields and it's, I mean, it's, it's hard to compare us. Weston, I think they have 14 fields, they said. So 14, they have a lot of fields.
It's a real community.
It's a real, oh, definitely, definitely. Um, they had a lovely storage facility underneath the building and that was basically because of topography of the building. So it was built on a hill, so that they had an extra bonus of all that storage underneath. I will say the advice we got from every single athletic director was you can never have enough storage. So we just took that as, you know, FYI, they all love the storage. Um, Welland High School completed their project in 2020. It was a full-scale project. It was 7.3 million dollars and it was fields, lights, amenities, building, a ticketing building. They had three phases of construction, but start to finish, it was nine months. And all the money came from the town, so it needed town meeting approval. And they had no CPC funding or private donations in Welland. Um, and their facility is right next to, they have this, um, gym. It actually looks, I said, oh, this looks like Lexington High School. So it's the same exact type of gym that Lexington High School has.
It's bizarre.
And it's, I think he said it looks like a spaceship. It looks like a spaceship and they have a, a rubber like running track around and they have the rubber courts. It's, it's the rubber floor. It's, it's very different, but they, but again, that building is right next to their stadium. So proximity, it's right there. So in addition to, I guess you'd call it like, uh, it was a field house at the time. It's really like a field house, but it is their gym. It's their actual gym. They don't have a performance gym. It's, and I think he said that, um, I don't know if Lexington bought the plans from Welland or Welland bought them from Lexington. It's the same gym. I was like, oh, that was interesting, a little fun. Um, and their restrooms, again, they have 12, they have the 22 bathrooms that are necessary. Uh, it's the only way they could do it and it's nothing fancy. They're all cement floors. They all have water filling stations outside. Um, they did have paper towels. And we were like, oh, we were surprised about that because that is one extra maintenance step. Um, inside of their typical ticket building is their concessions area. So they did not build it with the bathrooms. They have a separate building for that. And the AD told us that they really use that a lot for athletic training. And that's like during practices in the spring, during football practices. So when it's not used as a ticketing booth, it is really an athletic training room. They have a lot of storage underneath their bleachers, um, that's enclosed. So they built kind of a structure under there with garage door style pull-up doors and doors to access that. So it's all contained under their bleachers. They also have an elevator in their bleachers. That was something else we learned that if we were to construct bleachers today, it's a requirement to have an elevator. A ramp is not enough.
I thought it might be nice to get new bleachers with less people and maybe circumvent the plumbing code, but that wasn't going to work out.
You have to construct.
That wasn't going to work out.
So, you know, it was a learning experience. Um, LS, which we spend a lot of time at in all of our sports. So their original amenities building was built, our best guess is sometime in the eighties. So it's very small, but it again was existing. So they, in addition to that, have to bring in porta-potties. And so they do bring more in for graduation as we do. Um, they have one porta-potty there that's there all the time. And they do not have a gender neutral or family bathroom there. It's not heated. And they do have the three storage containers next to their restroom area. So you can see their, I hate calling this an amenities building because it really is really old and it's not that lovely. So it doesn't feel like an amenity, but.
Stadium is a lot closer to the school.
Their stadium, yes.
They're lucky in that regard.
So, but it's really hard to access the school from the stadium. So you kind of feel like when you're walking down to it, you're walking really far away from the parking lot. But you do, you, the school is not open during their games.
Right.
Yep, so. Um, so there we have that. And they're very, um, tired bathrooms, I would have to say. They have a very small concession area, just that little garage door goes up and they have, they have grills that they roll out and all their boosters use it. Every building had, um, I don't know if you can see it, but they had donor plaques or dedications or something to just kind of represent if there were donations or a thank you to a family that donated. And then I just went through the dual county league, just because those are all of our schools that we play to see what everybody's doing. I've talked to some of the school committee chairs. Um, AB, their stadium is right next to the junior high school. So they have concessions, maybe portable bathrooms and access to the junior high. Um, Bedford is currently putting in two bathrooms, but they had an existing concessions building. So they have some type of modular bathroom that they're adding in there. Boston Latin, I mean, they compete at White Stadium and Harvard Stadium, so those aren't really similar to ours. Cambridge Ritten, Chin Latin, it's Russell Field, same thing. They have, you know, these very large, I don't want to call them excessive, but I mean, they're stadiums. They're real stadiums with plenty of, um, restrooms. LS, you know, I just went through and I won't read all of these to you. Um, Newton South, that was the only one that I was trying to look for a little bit more information. I don't know if you might know, Kristen, of when they were constructed, but they did a field project and they did construct an amenities building that has the 22 bathrooms in it. It's nothing fancy. There are a couple of plugs for concessions. It's just a, they're all kind of these like cinder blocky type of buildings.
Engineered block.
Engineered block. Yeah, that was Westford Academy. It was the engineered block and it was actually lovely. So it wasn't just a regular cement block. They were a little texture and groove in the block.
So a little of that, you stay in the constraints.
Yes, it was, we learned something new and then.
That's not fancy as my memory.
No, that, and that's their, um, parents and music students run that and that's been there since. I'll say when I was in high school, which was a long time ago. It's the same exact building and I think they have like a wooden, you know, like push-out door. They lift up and that's it.
Westford Academy, I felt was the departure. It was significantly nicer than the other ones we toured. Everything else was very basic.
But nothing is, uh, I guess what I learned is nothing is really excessively fancy. I mean, it's a building with.
Even, yeah, even West.
Backrooms, even Westford Academy, it's just pretty, pretty simple. Um, so we just wanted to give, uh, the public kind of a overview of, of what our partner schools or, or league schools have, where we're at and what we have. And really the commitment is to provide, um, an accessible option or a permanent restroom structure. Because that is the one thing, we are the only school, we are the outlier, that we do not have a permanent structure down, um, by those fields. Any questions, comments?
Can you speak to Westford CPC and Concord CPC? Seems to be a disparity there.
Yes, I, we found that interesting. So I haven't had a conversation with CPC. Did you have that conversation, Carrie?
Yeah, you did. Yeah, I, I didn't know anything about Westford. Um, basically they get far more requests for projects that they have money to, to give out, as I'm sure you know. And so it's, I don't think they would, I, I don't, I can't speak for them, but it seems to me like they're very interested in participating in the track, less so about in this project, but we could go back.
But the project is not ineligible, which was the.
No, I don't believe it's ineligible.
The implication earlier.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I think that was just based on that conversation.
Okay, so it's not ineligible. Um, and to your point, yes. Um, most years they have no trouble spending all the money and turning a few people away. But there are years that are exceptions. So we can't say unilaterally that, uh,
Right.
There's always, uh, an excessive demand surpassing available monies. Uh, often true, not always true.
Yeah. And I do think in the case of Westford, they applied twice to CPC. The first time they were denied. And again, it probably depends on the projects that are brought forward to CPC that year. And then the second time they applied, they were granted the, the full amount.
Surprising because sometimes you're, you're told, come back a second year for another helping.
Yeah, and this could be, I mean, this is also the result of COVID. I mean, this was kind of in that 2020 period. So maybe a lot of people weren't applying to the CPC at that time. So, you know, maybe that was the only project that was going off.
And maybe nobody was building for a couple of months.
They were very well, yeah, they discussed being extremely well organized. Um, in their application process. Um, and doing a lot of due diligence in advance about getting, you know, booster groups, um, different sports teams really well organized to come out in support of the project.
I don't know if I added their CPC application to the packet. I'll double check that, but their CPC application is actually online that you can look through.
So here's the, the difficulty that suddenly comes up to my thinking. And that is, uh, the informal opinion from CPC was more interested in track than amenities building, if I'm understanding correctly.
Oh, more interested, just felt as though it was more aligned with their.
More aligned, more, okay, more aligned, okay. Um, and, and yet, uh, the regrettable part is we're ready to go with amenities and need it now. Whereas track is, uh, has a timetable that we can't quite even predict right now.
Yeah, but also saying, I think that.
I think it's worth an, an application. I, I absolutely think it's worth an application.
With two applications at the same time. I, I mean, that's how we were presenting the conversation was like, here are two things that we as a committee are discussing. What's your reaction to these two things? It was this over that. Um, but I think if we're, I mean, the track, we are not there.
Yeah, to your point.
Yeah, to your exact point.
And we may not be there next summer, which would be when we would probably be advancing this to the CPC. I think their timeline is early fall.
Yeah.
October, I think.
Yeah.
It's due September ninth.
That was early this year.
Sneaks right up on us, given our schedules are open schools. So that brings me to, to my question about the timeline. So with town meeting, does anybody know what a town meeting is in Carlisle? They're still discussing.
Discussing.
Because there's a conflict currently. We heard that the other day. Okay, and then we have to have a town vote, correct? And when would that be?
Well, we would have to have a ballot vote after, so we do a Concord town meeting. We do a Carlisle town meeting and then we would do a Concord ballot and then a Carlisle ballot. So we would have to ask for that. I mean, it might be in the fall.
Was it four weeks after the town, isn't it?
We don't have any other reason to, at this time that we're aware of that, that require a ballot vote. In either Carlisle.
Yeah. We would have requests out of both towns.
Right, and then there is the state, um, uh, primary.
Primary.
March.
March, yeah. No, wait, we have two elections. We have the town election and the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we have our own state primary, local.
Oh, right, and that'll be in the fall, yeah.
It's very early.
It is.
It's oddly early.
The presidential primaries in March, will that align like the school committee elections?
Yeah, I don't know. There's two, two elections this spring.
So we would have to get some guidance on.
National primary or whatever.
Yeah, that's in March.
Yeah, we'd have to get some guidance of a town ballot of when we would do that, when we could do that.
Right. Does anybody know how much in so many days at.
Yeah, right.
Meeting, I think it's 35 or 40, I can't remember.
Yeah.
Does anybody know how much an election costs in Concord and or Carlisle?
Okay, I don't.
But it seems like there are opportunities, like you wouldn't have to create a new one if there's. You know what I mean?
For the paving, I thought it was a Sept-ten, was it September in Carlisle or was it September in Concord? I can't remember.
Aligned with the primary gubernatorial race because we had just missed the spring election in Concord, so. We most likely wouldn't start any work until the next summer. Number 25. Depending on the election schedule.
Depending, yeah.
So we, so.
It's a fairly contained area also, wide of them.
But then I still think we could apply to Court's point for CPC funding to offset.
We wouldn't start.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah. And that would offset the cost of it, it, should we get the funding?
And it would benefit any effort to get funding elsewhere. Given everybody assurances, we've tried all avenues.
And you could apply in Carlisle.
You can apply in Carlisle also.
You know, I, I guess the only thing I'd offer, having been at CPC in the fall, bringing a request for a project that had already been funded at town meeting when the middle school revisited this. It's a pretty hard sales pitch to make that you need the funding when you already have funding. And there was a, there's definitely a lot of question about that, knowing they had other projects without any, any funding attributed to them yet. They respectfully listened, of course, and haven't told us their outcome, but, um, they were definitely like, hmm. I'm sure you, you could feel that we might not be the priority.
Yeah.
My statement was predicated on CPC proceeding.
Yeah.
It's, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Get other, other, uh, money.
And certainly that would be the case with the track.
Has tax implications where CPC, that's already been paid for.
Yeah. I'll just put another plug in for perhaps thinking about phasing it, but for you to stop to, to get those funds.
Right, but we've already voted to pursue the Warren article.
I know. Um, one other thing I meant to mention in my liaison report is that at that, I don't think, I'm not sure who was there at the, um, committee member training. Uh, Carmen did say that she very much encouraged committees to come forward with an article that they have, if they have a split vote to represent the minority point of view. So I'm just going to throw that out there.
Let's kind of be keeping with state legislation now for ballots where.
I'm saying a town meeting, we do represent.
Both sides. It's kind of consistent.
Just throwing that out there.
And is it the same if there's an extension versus a na vote?
She just said represent both sides.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you could talk to her about it.
Yeah.
Because in her presentation, she went through it.
Yeah, I was there and she, she didn't say it's a must. She said it's a good idea to tell the whole story. In fact, it was how I heard it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. I'm just looking online for Sharon or Domingos. Any thoughts? No? Okay. All right, so Bob, I will turn it to you for the draft Warren article.
Okay. I'm just going to share it on my screen. So it's showing, I don't know if you need me to read it through, it's, it's there.
No, you don't, you don't have to read it through. We all have this and it is actually online, um, for anyone at home that's listening. It's attached to our agenda online. So we have some draft language in there. So if any of the members of school committee have any questions or comments.
This is, yeah, again, it'll be reviewed by bond counsel, um, it's.
And then again by town council. It has been or will be?
Will be.
Okay.
I changed, you know, I basically used what we used last time. I just changed the, uh, legal authority to apply to regional instead of to municipal districts.
And have you shared this, um, with Brian and Carlisle? Or no, not yet?
Um, I knew we were presenting it tonight.
Night, right.
Get to him that way.
I forwarded it to him today.
Okay, great. No, great, thank you.
Can you speak to the, some of the specifics upon which the 2.3 million is based? There are some assumptions here and some knowns here presumably.
It's, it's based on, um, we had a Gail, um, estimate, uh, from a couple of years ago that they recently, um, updated based on current market conditions. And it's essentially that number.
And can you review with us? And can you review with us, this is twenty-two bathrooms? And food, food area, and is there a athletic training area in this one? Is there, what's?
You don't have the square footage for anything beyond the bathrooms.
But I think the the essential question is, for two point three, what do we, what is, what does the district get? Now, we know we get bathrooms.
But we would get a design, and I think in the design process, we would work with them. And I would think that Aaron Jankus would, you know, be part of that, you know, what what are you looking for in that area?
Yeah, I mean, I just need to stress the schematic we have doesn't give you space for anything besides the restaurants. Because of the square footage.
But it still needs the design.
It does. I just don't know that you're gonna get anything else in there.
So help me out. The, the Gail number is predicated on a design for bathrooms and not some of the other features, as I just heard it.
Yeah, we'll confirm that.
The two point three then a number that won't work for all the other amenities you've been discussing tonight. And if so, why are we moving two point three if it's a known number unable to meet requirements beyond toilet stalls?
You need the two point three to get the restroom facilities.
I understand, but are we to go beyond?
When we have.
We have an impervious surface issue there, that you can't go beyond the pad that's there.
So, okay, but now interpret that for me. Does that mean that there would be no attempt on our part, given square footage, to have a building that had any of the features you were discussing?
I pulled it up court and I'll try to screen share if I can.
So I think, I know, I get.
Manic in front of me, so let's talk with what we have. Sixteen hundred and fifty square feet. So I'll stand corrected. There's a three hundred and forty square foot concession area. It's not very big, but something. A one hundred square foot utility room. A men's room, a restroom, and gender neutral.
Okay, so there's.
You got a little concession.
The.
Won't be elaborate.
Bathrooms that once we put a shovel in the ground, we're obligated to hit twenty-two, we think.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
And I think, you know, when we look at some of those other schools, like you, Welland in particular, theirs is just a restroom house. That is it. And so I don't know why they went for like the the ticketing part. I mean, I think that was part of a larger plan because they did the whole stadium, the lights, and then that's where they said, oh, let's put concessions here. We don't want them by the bathrooms. And they don't have an athletic training room. They use the concession area to do that when there's not a game. It needs concessions.
And if we were to have an athletic training room, we'd immediately open up the conversation, where would we have it? Is that where the greatest volume is, the greatest activity, or is it the upper field? Which is why we have one in the middle and why we have the the gators running around.
So there's the schematic. I guess within the sixteen hundred square feet, I'd be able to do a little creative something, but that's what they came up with the first time.
Yep.
I'll resend these to you all, so you have.
Pretty utilitarian.
Yeah.
Pretty basic.
Yeah.
But I think in this climate, it's that's also responsible. You know, I don't think we're looking for.
No, two point three is a big ask.
Yeah.
Coming on top of everything else that we've asked the town to support.
Yeah.
Towns are very generous, very supportive.
And I think really, you know, our priority is is getting a permanent structure that is accessible, you know, and that's, that's the priority. Anything else is a nice to have beyond that, you know.
I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench into anything, but anytime there's open turf, we think about electrical storms. Would we see that this thing was protected because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a target for for lightning?
For lightning.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
It's gonna be part of the design, but my point is anytime you have a ball and a lot of metal bleachers, and now you have a building, it's gotta be.
Part of the design.
Be factored in. I'm sure it will be.
Yeah.
We have had episodes in this town before and other towns.
We had one this year, actually. It was their first game. Okay. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. All right, and moving on to policies, we have a second read of the policies that are listed here of J I C, B E D H, I J, I I can't even read what that one is. Grievances, J K, J K A, J K A A. So we have seen these now in our policy meeting. We've seen them as a first read. This will consist of our second read, and then we will be voting on them in our action items. Any further discussion on any of those?
Just no change since our first read.
No change since the first read, so exactly the same. Okay, so we'll move on to our action items, and I don't know if someone has the first one, which is the vote to approve our school committee policies in front of them. And we will take a roll call vote for this. Okay.
I think I have it.
Okay. Is this what we want to make?
No, my ad block plus has been updated.
I can move it. I move that the Concord and Carlisle School Committees. Sorry, I vote that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees wrote to approve the following school committee policies as discussed. One, J I C student discipline. Two, B E D H public comment. Three, J I I student complaints and grievances. Four, J K student conduct. Five, J K A corporal punishment, which will be removed. Six, J K A A physical restraint of students.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Roll call, please.
Anderson, eye for both.
Booth, eye for both.
Marano, eye for both. Patel, eye for region.
Rainey, eye for both.
Rankin, eye for both.
Whit, eye for region.
Okay, perfect. And then we have a vote to amend the nondiscrimination statement in all school handbooks.
Yeah, just briefly, we're just making sure that everything aligns with your school committee list of subgroups that are protected under the policy. And so the state is reviewing all our handbooks and asks that we, I think they found a couple of spots that wasn't perfectly aligned, so we just need to do that en masse and be sure we scour those for any changes that need to be made.
So forgive me, I should have checked before the meeting. Is this verbatim from our policy as well? And the policy would.
Thought we had caught them all, but.
Would then have legal references which aren't necessarily required.
Not in the handbooks, no.
Thank you.
Just lining them all up.
So I would entertain a motion that the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to amend the nondiscrimination statement in all school handbooks to align with school committee policy.
So moved.
So.
Any further discussion?
Anderson, eye for both.
Booth, eye for both.
Marano, eye for both. Patel, eye for region.
Rainey, eye for both.
Rankin, eye for both.
Whit, eye for region.
Okay, and next we have a vote to approve the district bullying plan.
This is a reaffirmation of the plan as it exists. The law says it has to be voted every other year, which we will need to become more attentive to. The state, as part of the same review that brought us to the vote on the nondiscrimination, has noted that it hasn't been reviewed, so we need to do that. But we're not changing anything. It's completely aligned with the law. We're just needing to reaffirm it.
So I I personally can't support voting for a thirteen-year-old plan. I understand the state wants you to do it. It's got many errors in it and it doesn't represent our district or current state of things. It also wasn't updated to reflect the changes in the twenty fourteen bullying law, so.
I I had a similar opinion. I thought it could take, it, I I thought it would benefit from a little, a little attention or first even some programs that we no longer offer. So it makes it difficult to reaffirm it if we, if we know that it's out of date and in fact inaccurate. It's easy to just take it from twenty ten, but I don't think it's correct.
So the options we have are to not vote it tonight until the state, we're gonna make those edits because they're on site November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. We do have a meeting next week on the fourteenth. We don't have the region, but it's, we can, we have other options if you don't want to vote it.
We can post that we are going to make the changes over the course of this year.
Oh, I think we should.
Yeah, yes, of course. And then the handbook, it would be incorporated into the handbook for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Would it benefit the administration for one or two of us to independently go through this and just highlight a few things? Would that save anybody?
More eyes on it, the better. Yeah, yes, absolutely.
And we just do that independently so we're not deliberating offline and. Okay.
Problem.
Okay. So, Ed, can we funnel all of those to?
Yes, I'll take them.
Yeah.
And I think we should have a a timeline for this, just so it's not one of those projects that keeps on going. So if I would say in the next week, if you could get the changes, if you find anything, get them to us and we'll try and streamline this and vote on it as soon as we have all the corrections. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I I have faith that the administration and leadership can do this very nicely. I'm I'm not suggesting that I would wordsmith anything, but just highlight things that are known to need attention.
Because if we did have them and we could get those changes out to the committee before our December meeting, we could vote in December and then we think it might look better on the district if we at least have a date for when we're voting on them.
Message we've got, as long as it's in process, it's fine.
In process, okay, all right, all right. So if you can send all that, so I'm gonna remove that vote. And with that.
You have a motion on the table?
We, no, there was not a motion on the table. So we will not be voting on that tonight, and anyone that has any comments or updates to that, if you can just send them to me in the next week. So I would say by our meeting on Tuesday night, that would be great. And with that, I will adjourn the region. So thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Sharon.
Sharon.
Do you have an editable ver, I don't know if that's, like, how would we show you?
You could hi, you could highlight the PDF and make comments on it maybe or put it into a Word document.
It's like a weird PDF. It's like weirdly sectioned. I think it was created like in some other platform. Many years.
Or just go by section, yeah.
You know, H two paragraph.
You open it in acrobat, it kind of gets.
You know, I know.
Yeah.
So I don't know, we can.
Just maybe a page number and.
Paragraph?
Paragraph.
Okay.
That'd be great. All right, so no meeting on Tuesday. You can go to Carlisle.
At all. Budget meeting.
Here.
Five P M, which you could do on Zoom.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we told you before, you could do it on Zoom. So you and Sharon can absolutely come by Zoom. You can absolutely come here if you want. It's up to you.
Yeah, no, that's easier than having to drive all the way back there.
Yes.
I know we're not that far, but when.
Maybe even. Exactly. Exactly. Thanks.
Very easy for you. Does anyone need to use facilities? Do we want a five-minute break or do we want to keep going? What do we want? Maybe. Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss.
Love to meet up for.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I thought it might be helpful just to get out into the narrative, into the public, sort of how we arrived here and and also to talk about some of the history that you all have that I sent in the packet that talked about the, the, the two buildings, the Sandborn Building and the Peabody Building, and how they sort of got to where they are. And maybe I'll start with that history for just for everybody. I I note that we do still have people tuned in, so. Upon construction of a new junior high school in nineteen sixty-four, the school committee was tasked to consider what to name this new facility. A process ensued. I think there were eight submissions. And the school committee named the new school, the Concord Junior High School, while naming the building itself, the Sandborn Building after Frank Sandborn. Couple of years later, in nineteen sixty-eight, a new elementary school was being built on Old Pickard Road. A similar naming process ensued. The building was named, or actually, the school was named the Peabody School after Elizabeth Peabody. I note the difference in these two votes. If you read the language in the minutes, one names a school and designates a name for a building. That's in the case of the Concord Junior High School with the building being named the Sandborn Building. The Peabody vote names the school, the Peabody School. Just again, nuance that I think is, could end up being relevant here. Another thing that I thought was kind of interesting as we get to the conversation where we are now, these were both new buildings, not, not just new buildings, but new facilities. There didn't exist. You know, they were adding an elementary school and adding a junior high school. These weren't renovations or new buildings of existing schools. So like where we are today isn't precisely equivalent to this history. Um, and I think that is relevant. Um, you know, when we've replaced buildings with Concord Carlisle High School, the Willard School and Alcott School, we didn't entertain new names. So this is a bit of a departure. But um, you know, we do have in this instance, um, a couple of different, you know, loosely organized groups advocating for us to consider um, whether we would like to rename the school. So here we are. Um, I know, you know, this was not something that was born of our own priorities here on the school committee. We are responding um, to constituents um, again. So here we are. I think that kind of sums up um, how we got here. And I'd like to open it up to all of us to kind of talk. I think what the first order of business as we, as we embark on this is to, to decide whether we're interested in opening up a naming process. A naming process would um, be a more formal process where we would uh, allow constituents or residents um, to offer suggestions for naming a buildings. If we, if we chose to do that, um, in a formal process would ensue. There would be a designated time, submissions would be um, entered. Uh, we would consider them. There would likely be some sort of forum. Um, we would outline that process, that process, the details of such a process are not precisely outlined in our existing policy. Um, but we've, we have consulted um, our legal counsel who suggested that the first order of business is not to discuss specific names, but is this something that we would be interested in? So I posed that question to all of you today um, to sort of discuss.
I'm curious why we engaged legal counsel before we considered the town policy for naming town buildings.
So we.
I don't get it.
Um, well, we, well, so we looked at the town policy. The select board chair, who is an attorney, looked at the town policy. Um, and specifically because the select board chair read that and interpreted that policy as leaving the schools with the authority and responsibility to name a school. That is actually why um, we consulted our counsel, who I'm embarrassed, I forget the Mass General Law, but um, the specific chapter.
I think it's 150E, sorry.
So um, there, you know, so the select board chair agrees, our counsel agrees. Um, the authority does in fact, and the historical record agrees that his, the authority does rest with the school committee.
So. Can I read you two sentences of the town's?
Sure, no, I've, I've read it. You can read it.
I'd like to read it. Requests for naming of any public property such as buildings, rooms uh, within buildings, playgrounds, recreational facilities, squares, parks, and other public facilities shall be considered at an advertised public hearing before the board or committee responsible for operating the facility. The board or committee shall then refer a suggestion or suggestions to the select board with a record of the hearing and a committee recommendation for approval. I'm, I'm baffled why Mr. Dane would consider this ambiguous or not uh, as straightforward as I read it. I.
And certainly our legal counsel interpreted it the same way. She was given whatever that one is, APP, whatever.
Yeah. Opinion of the Concord Town Council?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I respect Mr. Dane's legal, you know, ability, but just, just so we get everything straight, you know?
Yeah.
And if the Concord Town.
Can appeal to that.
Sure.
I mean, we don't have direct access to the Concord Town Council. You'd have to do that through the select board of town.
I can, I can make that happen, sure.
Thank you.
But again, the people that have been consulted thus far are all in agreement, I, which I think is encouraging, so.
In agreement that.
That the authority rests solely with the school committee to name a school building.
Contrary to said policy.
Because this, this only went to place in 1990. So after the buildings that you talked about were named, correct?
Sure, I mean, and again, you'll see, we have a naming, a facilities naming policy as well, FF. Um, and I am not an attorney. I have consulted with two at this point. They are in agreement. That's what I can, if you'd like a third legal opinion, I suppose.
Like a discrepancy between our policy and the town policy, which one trumps the other, is there?
We're Department of the Town.
We are, so the, the town trumps our policy?
No.
They hopeful, they should align, as I think. Yeah, they should align.
Yes.
We have autonomy in some ways, not in others.
Yeah.
Because it does, yeah, like, I haven't read this whole thing, but I've read the F, I've read FF, I've read ours.
So, but some. And I would assume MGL would trump a town policy as well.
Carrie, here, here's what happened. The select board named the building committee. The building committee oversees the building. Then the building is turned over to the school department by the select board.
So currently, it's a town building.
It always, it always will be.
Nothing.
And in fact, and in fact, when we, when we leave, when we leave the Peabody School, we give it back to the town.
Yeah.
We release it.
Yeah.
Because it was theirs to begin with, theirs, if you will.
I think for the. The Concord Middle School Peabody Building, because it's not the Peabody School.
Yeah.
I think everybody knows what I'm referring to.
Yeah, no, 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 I just.
Surplus building.
Right, right, right.
So again, I, I'm happy to entertain a third legal opinion. That's not a problem. But I think I don't want that to preclude us from having um, a discussion here tonight. I think that's important um, regardless.
Yep. I agree.
Well, I've thought about it long enough to know my opinion is, let's follow this uh, policy, which allows us to create a public forum so that if there are in fact, multiple groups, as you say, they all have an opportunity to do this in a fair and public way and put the onus on us to make a tough.
But I think again, these are new buildings. We're, we're, so we're in a difficult.
My opinion, Alexa.
What? Oh, yeah, no, but I think again, I think the nuance that we're, we're in kind of this like uncharted territory is we are not creating a new facility. We are renovating an existing one with it, you know, so that's.
We did not renovate a facility. I, I am on the building committee. I've been on the building committee for a long time. We renovated nothing. We put a shovel.
Well, sure.
To the ground, Alexa.
Right, but, and, and I wouldn't call Willard a renovation, but we're replacing existing buildings. And actually, anyway, so we're replacing. Or, or Willard, or Alcott.
Alcott, yeah.
They're all, they're all the same. We all, we've replaced new buildings with old ones.
On the same side.
Could you explain your reticence to allowing a public process?
I'm not. I have no, I, I just, I want to make sure that we are following our policies, MGL. And again, I don't, we're not constructing a new school. We are not, um, if we were making a fourth elementary school, 100%, there's no, there's no discussion that we would have to name that new school something. That is not the situation we're presently in, similar to how there was no dis- like, there just wasn't this discussion with Willard or with Alcott or the high school. So it is a little different, and I think that is worth noting. No one would dispute if we were to build a second high school or, you know, I, we wouldn't do that. But um, you know, a fourth elementary school, we would certainly have to name that school. This is, I think, a little bit different, and that's worth noting. And it was for that reason that our attorney said, what you need to first entertain is, do you want to rename your existing school?
You referenced two attorneys.
Our attorney.
So we share an attorney with the superintendent.
No, it's ours.
Attorney.
Who did we consult, please?
Michelle McNulty.
Okay, right, yeah.
School committee attorney.
Yeah, school committee attorney and also superintendent attorney, correct?
No, absolutely not.
Really?
I consult her on personnel matters.
That's my point.
That doesn't mean she's my attorney.
Okay. Okay.
It's technically your attorney, you hire and change. She just wanted us to be outline a proper process.
Okay.
That was abiding by not only MGL, but our policies and that kind of.
I think it'd be important to see MGL and was there a second attorney?
Mr. Dane.
Mr. Dane, okay, thank you. So he was acting in his chair capacity at that.
And again, I think he was, he had had a conversation with me saying, I've been approached with this policy. I read the minutes of the May 13th meeting where you directed the DEI committee to look at that policy. And I think he was reacting to um, to that. Um, when they came to that, with him with that policy saying, I do not interpret this as a school facility. The school facility naming rests in your authority. And that was the extent of the conversation I had with him. So then we sort of took it up from there.
So is the question, is this a new facility? Because the policy is around new facilities. It's a new building, but it's not a new facility. Like it's, it is a, we have a middle school.
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I think, I think that's where, I, again, I think that's where it becomes tricky.
You mean the town policy you're talking about?
Well, no, our policy is meaning new facilities. So the question is, is this a new facility or is it a new building? And then for an existing facility, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm still baffled as to why we want to have a, have a debate about this. We, we have an opportunity to name what we have been referring to for many, many years as a new building. Um, we wanted a new building many years ago and we've been.
Again, I think to Carrie's point, it's a facility.
Been on a new building campaign uh, for some years now, um, and we're well into it now. Um, so it just, it just strikes me as odd that we'd want to uh, parse words to figure out whether we shouldn't consider naming a, a new building, right? I don't get it.
Well, I think because it's not a, it's not a new school, it's a new building. I don't know.
I don't get why we.
I strongly believe that.
To deny ourselves the opportunity to.
At the end of the day, we come to the conclusion that we're going to name it the Concord Middle School and not some other proposed name. And then so be it, but let's have the conversation.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. Do we, like, I think the question is, do we, should we have that conversation?
Well, I'm, I'm firm, yes.
So I look at, you know, every school has now been constructed in the town. So Alcott was first, and then Thorough, and then Willard, then the high school, then the middle school. Did any prior school committee have this discussion about those schools when they were being built, to anyone's knowledge?
Not that we could find in any minute.
When we rebuilt the Alcott, we said we wanted to rebuild the Alcott. When we replaced Willard, we said we wanted to replace Willard. When we replaced Thorough, we said we wanted to replace Thorough. We didn't say that about the Sandborn and the Peabody School. We wanted to abandon both of those and create one magnificent new middle school.
Concord Middle School. But it's the Concord Middle School Building Committee, I think, I think to, to the average person in town, they refer to the middle schools, the Concord Middle School, CMS, yes.
We've been assisted on that over the years. In fact, uh, within the schools, we've always promoted this idea that there is one middle school with two buildings. And we never liked it, but we made the best of it.
Okay.
But that was then, and now we have a new, new building. So we have an opportunity. So I don't understand why we would go to all these machinations to decide that maybe we can't have a proper public process to name it. I don't, I still don't get it.
Well, I don't think we're even, so we're just in the discussion mode right now, where kind of we all stand with this, and we'll be voting next week. That's how I read your agenda overview, that we were discussing, are we going to entertain a naming process? So that's where this discussion is, and that's the question to be voted on next week.
And de facto, would we be saying, uh, were we to affirm what you just said? Um, that we're uh, going to follow the town's naming policy?
But I, so I think, I think that we're going back to the question, Court, which was Carrie's question. We're building a new building, but we are not building a new school. This is not an additional school to the roster of schools that we have. So this is, there's a nuance here that is worth.
Oh, yeah.
Harsay.
It's a net, it's a net loss of buildings, so we get that.
So, so, but again, you have, you're not naming a new facility. We're deciding whether to rename an existing facility, that facility being the Concord Middle School, which had two buildings.
Well, I think we could, you and I could agree to disagree, because I think uh, this town should uh, should name a new school. And perhaps you think differently, that's, that's fine.
Can I ask of the middle school building committee, has this been discussion of? So this has come up in any of your meetings?
Nor, nor, it, I mean, we could discuss it, I suppose, but it's not.
This hasn't been. From 2019 until now.
Never.
This has not been part of the discussion.
Never.
Or at the school committee, since I've been on since 2020. It hasn't been named as a priority that, you know, we've advanced.
We've been hearing about it from the public since the spring.
Yeah.
We just chose not to discuss it.
Well, but we're choosing to discuss it right now.
No, I get.
Yeah, I mean, we heard once in the spring and once recently.
There hasn't been a, so not like, yeah, so we're, we're entertaining it now.
Well, maybe, maybe it would be useful, as long as this is an open conversation, to ask ourselves, what would be the implications of choosing to not have a public process and hear public opinion about this and bring a recommendation to the select board? To my mind, contrary to this policy, what would be the implications of that? How would people read that? Is that what we want to do? And if so, how, what would be our explanation for foregoing a policy like that and an opportunity to have a equitable public process that's already started informally with people coming up?
I think.
Last six months.
Yeah, my answer to that is, you know, we talk a lot about at the MASC level, um, the importance of this body defining its own agenda and priorities and sticking to that. We've departed from that in this instance by allowing what is really limited public discourse um, to, to define our priorities. That is a departure um, from really what, what we in general should do. I, and, and I, what I worry about is, and I, and again, I worry about it even though I've made this, this gesture. We, we sometimes can get into a position, and I don't want to be in this position, where we allow groups that we are favorable towards to come in and set our agenda for us. And we can routinely ignore groups that we find unfavorable. And I don't, in general, I don't like that. And again, I'm criticizing myself here.
But isn't this, isn't this policy designed?
But that's not our policy, Court.
Well, I didn't say your policy. I said, isn't this policy designed to prevent somebody gaming it, as you described, by having a open, visible public process?
But again, I think.
To make it formal under the bright lights, with an, you know, with an agenda, a process and a protocol, so that, so that what you just described can't happen.
Well, I mean, it, it, to my detriment, it already has, but.
How, how, how has anybody deviated from?
Because we have not advanced this as a priority. We have not discussed, we didn't, we, we just concluded our goal setting. This wasn't a goal of ours. It wasn't a goal of ours in 2020, 2019, 21, 22, now 23.
Deviation from how we should be functioning. Now, now is the time that we're discussing how to do it correctly.
Well, interestingly.
It wasn't even relevant before. So, so if it wasn't relevant before, how could we be deviating from something?
Well, it was, it was certainly relevant. It should have been relevant in 2019, but that didn't happen.
Because this school committee had not taken up the whole idea of naming. Instead, we've been, been the non-responsive recipients of public comment. And that's where it ends, because we don't engage in public comment.
But again, we didn't advance this as a goal in 2019, 2020, 2022, or 23.
Should have been on goals.
I, I, the same way that our facilities were on the.
We actually have facilities on our goals this year. We have CPS facilities and we have CCHS facilities on our goals. And this is not, this didn't come up in any of our school committee discussions. I think that's a fair point to say. This has not been a priority that we set during our goal setting.
I mean, the, the Danish, the Danish exchange student didn't come up, but it, then it did. Um, the voting policy didn't come up, but then it did. I mean, stuff comes up. Um, so I, I, I'm sorry, you're really losing me on, on your, your argument on this one.
Well, I don't think it's an argument. I think we're just trying to have a discussion about it.
And just trying to follow things to the letter.
Listen to all opinions on it.
All right, well, follow to the letter. I'm looking at the town's policy. I, I would defer to that, but that's my opinion. I'm one vote.
Any other thoughts before we move on?
Well, I think that. Well, I think that clearly, if, if you're saying you're deferring to the town's policy. Uh, you know, I feel like we're looking at our policy. I, I do look at it does fall. Solidly with the school committee as far as naming.
Let's get the town council to weigh in.
So we'll have to request to the select board to request of town council.
I, I feel like the select board should discuss this as well. You just had a conversation with the chair.
I didn't have a conversation with the chair. Chair to chair.
We just had a conversation with the chair, so.
But if it's in, if, when we get advice of council that it, say it lies within the school committee, then the select board doesn't need to talk about it. If it's our decision, you know what I'm saying? Like, I think we need to get a little bit more clarification to make everybody comfortable on this. See who's, who rests within.
Sure.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, still like, I don't understand. I don't agree with the logic that this wasn't on our goals. It should have been, okay. Um, but we do things all the time on, on our goals. That's what a good school committee does. And I think that we should be. Have an open process. And like I said, if at the end of the process, you decide to name it the Concord Middle School, so be it. But I just, I think. Having two meetings and then sh- shutting down the whole process is hasty and not.
We're not necessarily shutting down the whole process. We're entertaining.
We have a vote to not have a process next week. That means we're shutting down the process.
That's not shutting down the process. It's taking a vote as a committee and going with the will of the committee.
Yeah, which is what we do every week. And not only that, we're, 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 again, we are not creating a new facility here. So again, that's.
That is your opinion.
That is strictly an opinion.
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the CPS capital plan. I'll turn that over to Bob. We can talk after the meeting, Joe. We don't, we don't do the public stuff in our meetings. We're less, we're more formal than you guys. All right, Bob, you're up.
Hey, I'm just gonna call up the capital plan, which is posted on the school committee agenda. Hey, so um. What we're doing uh, with the capital plan here is, um, we've talked about this before. We're um, we're focusing on FY twenty-five. And we're resetting future years uh, based on a facilities conditions. Analysis, looking at the three elementary buildings in this building, Ripley. Not at the middle school, which will be a brand new building. So what we've done is um, for the. Following four years FY twenty-six through FY twenty-nine. We've um, we've put in a placeholder of nine hundred thousand. We're going to be guided by what the um, consultants recommendations are. And we'll look at what they uh, come up with recommendations and slot those into years the best we can. Um, but we'll have that report uh, in the spring and you'll see a copy of it and. You know, there may be some iterations of trying to slot their recommendations into different years. So in the meantime, we've identified um, some current needs um, in talking to. Most of them are facilities related. There's a couple that are um, a, a little bit different. Um, which I'll kind of walk through, but um, I did kind of wanna. Walk you through um, the information. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but I'll, I'll comment on them and um. You can pause if there's questions. Um, the first one is a, a roof infrared leak. Detection moisture scan for the three elementary schools in Ripley. Uh, we have a Maya Grant. Funded project at the high school this year that's doing this work. Um, and um, our facilities director thinks it's beneficial. We do have periodic leaks. In, in the schools, um, particularly in the middle school, but um, but you know, this will be focused on the elementary schools in Ripley. And we feel it's good value and um, the money that we spend on this could potentially avoid larger capital needs later. Um, and allow us to identify fixes for, for smaller issues. Uh, the flooring replacement's an ongoing project. And we're looking at. Well, I think the focus in FY twenty-five is, is on Alcott. Um, but you know, we have worn damaged flooring areas and um, we're gonna look to continually. Um, upgrade those over time and kind of rotate um, where the needs are. Custodial equipment, we have some aged, aged equipment. Um, we have probably requests, we anticipate for more than thirty thousand. The facilities director's gonna work with the schools to prioritize what they uh, specifically are looking at. Uh, could include floor scrubbers um, uh, and other equipment. But uh, the age of the equipment is um, fairly dated and uh, we do want to try to get into a regular cycle of upgrading that equip. Uh, refreshing that equipment, not necessarily upgrading. We've had requests from elementary school principals to look at um, our classroom furniture. These are um, twenty or over twenty years, years old in some cases. And um. We felt like um. Having an amount there, we still would need to prioritize which school that would go to. But um, this would include desks, chairs, um, and things like that. Um, that thirty-five thousand represent about two hundred and a hundred seventy-five per unit. So it would allow us to, you know, upgrade maybe three grades. The classrooms. The next item is, is the placeholder for the findings in the existing conditions report um, for FY twenty-six through twenty-nine. That'll be fleshed out in a whole lot more detail um, in about six months. The, the building recommissioning is to recalibrate and. Help us be a little bit more efficient in the usage of our systems. Uh, the focus would be at Alcott and Thoreau. Um, I believe this is um, not a need at Willard based on our conversations with the facilities manager. Um, it'll look at things like building schedules, look like the efficiency of how the. Systems communicate uh, with one another. Um, and so. Um, the goal there is to be a little bit um, greener and also to save some money. The building management system upgrades. We have. Something called the network automated engine, which has been replaced in each of the schools. There's um. Smaller um, controllers. That are part of these systems as well, and we need to replace four controllers. And there's some ancillary parts of about five thousand. The controllers are about ten thousand each. Um, and so these are things we need to do to keep our building management system running.
Bob, are those effectively like servers? What are they?
I've seen a picture. I don't know how to describe it. It's like, it's an electronics device. It's basically how the. The, the network automated engine is the main controller. These are how the devices communicate to the HVAC uh, system and other systems. But it's an electronics, uh, it's the intelligence to the building management system.
And maybe on the prior item, we could assume there'd be some modest cost recovery coming back our way.
There could be. There, well, that's the, that's part of the sales pitch we get from the company. You're gonna save some money. And you know, we did wanna kind of incorporate that into our thinking as we looked at some of these, some of, what are these things? Some of the things we can do that'll help us uh, conserve energy and at the same time save us some money. So um. So moving on to Alcott. We've had issues with the fire alarm notification panel. There were some issues in the past with false notifications going to the fire department that. Politely responded. And uh, there, there was some frustration. So. We need to do something about this. It's been something that came up on the building walkthrough. Russ has been talking to the fire department. Um, at the same time, we have aging smoke detectors. So um, the price at, is there is an estimate based on a quote from one vendor. We would of course go out and seek bids for this, but we felt like. Let's get a, a, a sense of what the cost will be. And um. It's something we feel like we need to do for health and safety. The plumbing repairs is a few uh, kind of. Repairs to different pieces of equipment. I think primarily the hot water heaters. And we kind of would um, bundle this work together. Uh, replacing something on a larger scale would be a lot more expensive and these repairs will enable us to extend the life of the equipment. The mesh wifi added based on conversation actually at this school committee meeting when I've heard, uh, we heard discussions about. The uh, benefit of the system at the high school. Uh, this will uh, enable what, uh, be wifi enabled calling accessible. And it's been discussed that Alcott is probably um, the worst. Aside from the high school or worse than the high school. And so um, we thought that this would be a good use of some capital funds to address a, a safety issue there.
We know it's. The middle school uh, is pretty bad. Yeah, it is. Yeah, but so we'll just have to see how things are once you hit it online, you know?
You're right, it's, it's bad.
Walking by there frequently, I'm like, oh, jeez.
Yeah, and there, there is a capital project there too, so I didn't necessarily wanna.
No, no, I, I, you just get it online and.
Yeah, get the new building up.
So the campus master plan, uh. You may recall, we talked about doing a study of the outdoor space at Thoreau. We've actually had to do some things um, in the short term that weren't really capital. They were. More um, repairs and maintenance, but um, we anticipate that. The uh, consultants are gonna have some recommendations for us related to outdoor spaces. We don't know what they are yet, but we um, we kind of put the balance of our capital here for FY twenty-five. Um, to address some of those needs, campus beautification, parking related, whatever uh, issues surface. Um, we will have a community forum on that, um, you know, kind of later on in the project. Um, there'll be a survey that goes out, so um, there'll be opportunities for people to give feedback on that and um, we anticipate. A decent number of ideas being generated.
Bob, is there a rough breakout of uh, money for planning uh, as opposed to money for implementing anything?
So the, the planning, what we're doing now is really feasibility and it's already paid for. It's the thirty.
Right.
Thirty thousand? I don't remember exactly what the number is, but I think it's about thirty thousand. That work is already factored in. That's not part of this. Um, if we come up with something that's complicated and requires us to pay for a design, that would, you know, be part of this if it's. If it's something simple, like I'm just gonna make something up, you know, we want a shade shelter and a little, you know, something we don't need a for. You know, that could go directly towards that, but we might have to pay for some. Professional services if we come up with ideas that are more complicated.
But at present, most of this, we would hope is allocated toward implementation.
We would hope, yes, yep.
Thank you.
And that'll be something we can bring, we know when we bring forward later, we can decide to prioritize some quick wins and things like that. So I don't know if you uh, folks have seen Willard. Um, there's a lot of outdoor space there.
Yes.
Courtyard is different than the other two schools.
Crazy, the amount of sidewalk, feel better, let's shovel that. So yeah, I support this.
Thank you. Uh, your, your custodial staff is very pleased to hear that. Um, and that's a lot of work.
Custodian is like, oh, that is. The amount of. Concrete in that whole area is just crazy big.
Beautiful, but it's big.
It is beautiful. I like it, but it's just, it's a lot to uh. Take care of.
And so I think the equipment they have is like over twenty years. I don't even know if they can use it. This is gonna be a little bit of a theme, some of the age of the equipment. This, and then there's gonna be something else later, but um, so this would help, you know, we clear our own snow. I've worked in other districts where the um. Town clears the lots and stuff, but we clear the lots, we clear the. The courtyard here as well and the sidewalks. So um, we want to give them good equipment so that they can have our schools ready when we open school. I've reserved, I've reduced the two life, safety and health um, amounts from fifty thousand to twenty-five since it's half a school year. At Sanborn and Peabody will be in. Um, so those were. Reduced from fifty each to twenty-five each. We have a fleet of copiers, um, and it looks like we did a replacement about.
We did.
Eight or nine years ago, and there's, there's different tiers of equipment, but um, we have a matrix we've worked on with our. With our vendor and we have red, yellow and green and a lot of reds.
Is it just elementary schools?
This is CPS.
I know.
Yeah.
So I, is part of FFNE at the middle school buying new copiers? So it wouldn't be part of this?
And um, if we had a new copier, we wouldn't throw it out. Like we would, I don't know that.
No, no. Are we buying new copiers at the middle schools? That's what I'm saying. As part of the building project.
I, I can look into that. I'm not sure.
Is this just the elementaries in Ripley or is it?
I'll look at the elementaries, yeah.
I mean, the elementaries have, have, have three each and a fourth in one of them.
Okay.
About two in each building are like on the edge.
I support copiers way over little printers. There.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, us too. Yeah, it's much better.
I feel like it is part of FFNE, but it usually is.
It should be, yeah, it should be. Can we go back to Peabody for a minute? Uh, we know that uh, th- the Sanborn demo is part of the building project. Do we need to be considering uh, somehow mothballing the Peabody or shutting that down?
I think, I think we, I think it gets handed over. I think, I don't know if that's been voted already.
No, no, they're gonna have to surplus it and then the town will decide what.
I, I understand, but do we need to do anything in order to surplus it? It's not a question.
You need to empty it out.
Like, just, yeah, yes.
Is, cause now is the time to think about that.
Yeah, I actually want to talk more with Hill about that because I'm unclear as to what. Project to help with that.
Is it the opposite of FFNE? Like you turn the building upside down and shake it? Is that what we need to clear out? Like, you know?
Let's look at that now before we get any further down the road on this.
Yeah, we'll talk to Hill and find out what is in the project.
I know the high school had a big group. It had a fire sale. We brought in other districts.
Yeah, surplus.
Then they had a community day that everybody took things home and my husband's still like, why do we have that?
Piece of history.
Okay, got a note on that. So the bus radio upgrade, we, we've had um, some challenges with communication with our existing. Communications equipment. And we've worked with our IT team and the vendor. And there's a different system uh, which is. Believe it, it's, it's more current technology. I think it's voice over IP. And um. This would outfit the full fleet, which, you know, we had an issue. You can, might remember this. There's been, there was an accident last year. I think the storm this year with the trees down, like they need to be able to communicate and they've had some challenges and we, we don't want to be in a situation where. This has been an ongoing frustration that's been kind of surfacing the last six to twelve months. So we feel like this is um, low cost for um, big benefit to uh, transportation, big benefit safety wise.
Do we have money uh, to, for the balance in operating?
I would have to charge that to the region because they would have to, they should be paying forty percent of it. Probably even twelve thousand, just. Gonna fund it through one-time funds. The dump truck is twenty years old. It's essentially not roadworthy anymore. Um, it needs to be replaced. We have another dump truck. It's probably a couple of years behind it. I did, you know, just separate anecdotal information. Um, you know, we did look at the age of our fleet and, you know. The town of Concord's fleet is um, is more current. I, I do think we need to get to a place where some of our. Our maintenance uh, vehicles a little bit more current. So, you know, we're trying to do some of that this year. There may be a, an ask a couple of years down the road for another. Vehicle. And the last center, uh, last item is. Should have a picture for the last one. We had um, an ice block that was um, about this large in the um, the data server room. There's a half a million dollars in, of equipment in there and uh.
Yeah.
Yes, and um, we. Um, and talking to, to facilities and. IT, they wanted something that they didn't have to worry about. Safety of that equipment.
Is it rooftop unit they were replacing?
There's a, there's, there's one. It's not, it's not sufficient.
No, no, I'm just asking.
We would probably do a supplement. We, we'll um, figure out what we do. We'd probably do a supplemental split system. And um, and that'll be able to keep up with the coolant needs.
That's not good.
No.
We have ice blocks in my school. It's not good.
Not good at all. Pretty impressive ones.
We get some, yeah. Waterfalls.
So they, uh, by showing the uh, showing that, it was kind of clear to us that we needed to, we needed to do something there. So again, that's the full nine hundred thousand that we've historically received. We did use the Thoreau as kind of the, the placeholder to, to, to fit the difference. for the outdoor work. And in future years, um, we have, um, nine hundred thousand that will be defined and allocated to specific projects, but for now we felt like it would be premature to put something in that could very easily change, um, next year.
With the report.
We, we, we certainly had some things in mind, but felt like it was better to, to wait and not, uh, kind of play smaller items in there to mix it up a little bit.
Have we had an informal conversation with the town manager on the number?
We've had a couple backs and forths. She's been out of town for two weeks, so we haven't been able to follow up yet.
Yes, we'll discuss that next week.
Yeah, kind of be live, I think.
Yeah.
And I've talked to the new CFO about it as well, but.
Thank you, Bob. Does anyone have any questions? I feel like we've seen it twice. We've had some good discussion about it. All right, Phil, thank you, Bob. We're impressed and thorough and appreciate it. I meant to message you all about this. We are going to move the approval of the Washington D Street trip to our next meeting because there are just some details. Oh, I did message you about this. So we will move that, um, to our next meeting. And at this point, I will adjourn the regular meeting and entertain a motion for the five of us to move into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and we will not return to open session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Right. All in favor? Do we roll call that for exec? Anderson, aye.
All here.
Okay. Anderson, aye.
Who was I?
Thanks, Tom.
Domingos just came on.
Oh, hey, Domingos.
Thanks for joining.
All right, thank you, guys. We'll adjourn into exec.
Make an eye.